Good evening, everyone. This is October 18th, 2022. This is the regularly scheduled meeting of the Cupertino City Council. Would you please join us in pledging allegiance to our nation's flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam City Clerk, could you please conduct the roll call?
Councilmember Moore?
Here.
Councilmember Way?
Here.
Councilmember Willie?
Here.
Vice Mayor Chow?
Here.
Mayor Paul?
Here. Okay, I'm going to ask our city council to join me on the dais. We have three presentations for ceremonial matters and proclamations this evening. Item number one is the consideration of a proclamation recognizing October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. And from Maitri, we have Bhishaka Chatterjee and Tejesui Dada to accept our proclamation this evening. And so if you would please come up to the dais with us and we will provide that proclamation, as well as a couple of minutes to speak before the presentation of the proclamation. Welcome and thank you so much for all that you do.
Thank you for having us.
You're welcome. Come on over. Come on over. And do you care to say a few words about Domestic Violence Awareness Month?
Yes, so, good evening. Good evening, Mayor and everybody else in the council and the public. My name is Bhishaka Chatterjee and I have been a resident of Cupertino for the last 20 years. Today, I stand here as an advocate for domestic violence victims and survivors. I represent Maitri, an organization that has been serving domestic violence victims and survivors since 1991. I would like to take a moment to speak a little bit about domestic violence. It is a scourge that affects every section of our society irrespective of race, culture, gender, economic background, or educational qualifications. Would you like to say something?
Yeah, sure. So, I think we are here today essentially to accept the proclamation, but also to request the city to honor some of the requests we have that might help it make it more trauma-informed and accessible for survivors. I think Bhishaka kind of listed three of the things that would be very useful, so...
I can hold it for you as you read it.
So, I would like to request the city to support and enact policies that take an intersectional approach to domestic violence, homelessness, reproductive rights, and poverty reduction, to name a few. Support funding for domestic violence service providers at the federal, state, county, and city levels. And rethink law enforcement responses to crisis situations with a special focus on trainings on domestic violence. Thank you all for your time.
Excellent. Thank you. And thank you for being here, for accepting the proclamation for Domestic Violence Awareness Month. But more importantly, thank you for everything that you do in your daily lives to help the plight of people suffering from this scourge, as you very rightly called it, of domestic violence. We greatly appreciate your work. And we'll go ahead and... Do you want this? Thanks so much.
Thank you so much.
Absolutely. I'll take the... And our second proclamation this evening is a note of appreciation to our code enforcement officers. And I believe one of our code enforcement officers is here tonight, Monica Diaz, to accept the proclamation for code enforcement officer appreciation. Is it a month or a week that we have?
A week.
I believe it's... It might be a week, right? It's a week. So, Code Enforcement Officer Appreciation Week. Monica, thank you for everything that you do to help keep our community safe. Is there anything that you'd like to say on behalf of the code enforcement officers of Cupertino?
Just to sure not to thank everyone for their support, not just the council and Mr. Mayor yourself, but our departments that we work with, city attorneys here, our city managers here, and my department head, Ben, and my supervisor, Albert, as well as my code enforcement officers team, which encompasses Marvin Aguilar and Jeff Trebus, as well as Dan Vescas. So, thanks to everyone for making the program successful and thank you guys for the opportunity.
Thank you, Monica. Greatly appreciated. We're very grateful, and I know I speak on behalf of each and every one of the council members, for the work of the Cupertino Library Foundation in supporting the efforts of the city and the city council, the staff, to bring forward this wonderful expansion of the Cupertino library space. It's a two-floor space that has meeting rooms and really activates the bottom-floor courtyard. And the Cupertino Library Foundation went on a fundraising drive to help supplement the efforts of the city of Cupertino. And so, without further ado, I'd like to ask our members of the Cupertino Library Foundation, Kiran Varsnaya, as well as Jim Davis, to come on up to the dais. I believe Kiran may have a few words and Jim may have a relatively large piece of paper to provide to the city. Welcome, Kiran and Jim.
Well, today I am here as the president of Cupertino Library Foundation. My name is Kiran Varsnaya and we are... We are a nonprofit organization. We are advocate for the library and for the community. We provide creative and financial support to the Cupertino library. So, the funds that we have raised, and we are very happy to hand over that to the city today, is for an amount of $229,465.
There we go. Okay, great. We'll take a photo op after.
The funds have been donated by our community and by businesses here in our community. We are forever grateful for their contribution. We also want to thank Mayor Darcy Paul for your leadership through this project, really from the start to the end. Also, thank you to Vice Mayor Liang Chow and all the esteemed city council members for your support for this really wonderful project. I have to say a word of appreciation for our city manager, the city staff, for the outcome that we see today, the results we have right in front of us, and for successfully completing the project despite all the challenges of the last couple of years. So, thank you for all your efforts. I cannot leave this place without saying thank you to our Cupertino librarian Claire Varesejo, all the staff here at Cupertino library, and also thank you to Santa Clara County Library District for their support. And most of all, I am going to say thank you to our patrons, all our community. Cupertino library is the most visited library in the district. It has about 3,000 visitors a day. So, we want to invite you all to come and see the new program spaces, and they are also available for our community, for community events and meetings. Thank you so much.
And we have a certificate of appreciation that we'd like to provide to the library foundation as well. And would our community librarian like to join us for this photo op? Claire, come on up. Yeah, come on up. Claire Varesejo, everyone. Thank you, Claire. Well done, everyone. And everyone, that is our ceremonial matters and proclamations for this evening. We are going to go and transition to a hybrid meeting now. A couple of our council members will be taking this meeting from a remote location so that we can have proper social distancing on the dais at this time. And so, we will take a 15-minute break. We'll return in 15 minutes to resume the rest of our regular meeting. Thanks so much. Okay, hello, everyone. We're at 7:15, starting up again with the meeting. We are now at postponements and orders of the day. Let me check in with our city clerk first. Madam City Clerk or Madam City Manager, are there any postponements and orders of the day affecting this agenda?
No postponements, Mayor.
Okay, none. Let's go to council. Are there any requests for postponements or rearrangements of the current agenda this evening? I'll go by a show of hands. We have one hand raised, and that is from Councilmember Moore. Councilmember Moore, what is your request under this item?
Okay, thank you, Mayor Paul. So, if I do have a second, I would like to see item 17 move to consent.
Councilmember Moore requests item 17 moved to consent. I'll go by a show of hands for a second. And item number 17 is the review of crosswalk options across Rodriguez Avenue. And is there a second for that? If there's none, I will go ahead and second that request. And let's go ahead and see if there is any desire for discussion. I don't see any hands raised further. We have a motion and a second on the table. Madam City Clerk, please conduct a roll call vote on this proposed order of the day.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Way?
Aye.
Councilmember Willie?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Chow?
Aye.
Mayor Paul?
Yes.
The motion carries unanimously.
Okay, and I will remind our colleagues and members of the public that if you do care to speak to an item that is on consent, we will have an omnibus opportunity if that item doesn't get pulled from the consent calendar as well when we arrive at that set of items on our agenda this evening. The next item, or category, I should say, in our agenda is oral communications. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to address the council on any matter within the jurisdiction of the council and not on the agenda. The total time for oral communications will ordinarily be limited to one hour. Individual speakers are limited to three minutes. I will go to our Zoom function first and then our live speakers. We have one hand raised from the public on Zoom. That is from Shawnee Kleinhouse, and now I see San R. As we stated, we will have three minutes for each comment. If your hand is raised on Zoom, or if you have a blue card in, within the time that the first person is done speaking, your comment will be called upon. And if you send an email to cityclerk@cupidino.org within that time that the first speaker is speaking, then you will also be called upon. I have two other blue cards that have been filled out in advance. They are from Nia Rica Amani and Rick Kitson as well. And so, as of now, we have Shawnee Kleinhouse, San R, and the two blue cards. Shawnee, welcome, and you will have three minutes.
Good evening, Mayor Paul and council members. My name is Shawnee Kleinhouse. I'm the Envahmel Advocate for the Santa Clara Valley Odebon Society. In the past few weeks, residents have been coming to this forum to speak about the golf course and whether it should be retained or returned to nature. This evening, I wish to provide some context and historical perspective. In 2014, after completing a wonderful model creek restoration project, Cupertino considered alternative from public recreation and enjoyment of the Stevens Creek corridors, McClellan Ranch, Blackberry Farm, golf course, and Stocker Meyer orchards. Three recreation-intensive alternatives were initially considered. All three would have had severe impact on the sensitive right-hand corridor and the many, many residents who enjoyed the beauty, the wildlife, the birds, and the natural resources there. So, Odebon advocated with the city to choose the fourth alternative, one that was focused on protection and enjoyment of nature. And I remember racing along Stevens Creek on a muddy trail with Barry Chung in the rain and walking with you, Mayor Paul, and your newborn baby, looking at the creek and the birds and nature there. Odebon did not, at the time, advocate for the elimination of the golf course. Our proposed alternative four did not choose between golf and nature. It just looked to have activities that were compatible with the creek and not too intensive. In 2014, the residents of Cupertino echoed our preference in surveys, in letters, in public meetings, and council listened to the community and set aside the three alternatives and moved forward with the fourth one, which allowed the trail and some improvements, but not to the extent that the three alternatives had. Now, more than 4,000 people are responding to surveys about the future of the golf course. In over a decade of advocacy, I have never seen such strong response to any park issue in any of the cities in our county, not even San Jose, which is so much bigger, and on issues that I thought people should engage in. So, Cupertino should be proud of its engaged public and how much people care and find the middle ground. We at Odebon, we prefer the natural alternative, but we respect community sentiment and your judgment, and we hope that you find a way to have the golf course be better for the wildlife that are along the creek and not eliminate the immunity that so many people care about, just find a way to make it better. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Shawnee. And I note that the city clerk handed me a couple of additional blue cards there from Jenny Huang and Rhonda Frye. And Madam City Clerk, were there any emails that came in during this time to your account?
Yes, Mayor, I was handed one email to read.
Okay, so there's one email after the blue cards. And so, we also have San R and Jenny on Zoom. And so, welcome, San R.
Thank you, city council, for the time to speak today. I wish to bring to your request once again, the request for additional pedestrian crossing safety measures around the schools, particularly schools without crossing guards right now. I'd like to request the city council to please commission a study of which schools do not have crossing guards currently and see if you can prioritize the addition of crossing guards at schools. I can say for a fact that there are no crossing guards at Feria Elementary, and there is quite a bit of traffic there and congestion, and parents trying to get through to the drop-off. And as you know, just last month, there was a pedestrian fatality on Wolf Road. It was in adjacent Sunnyvale, but 11:00 AM, there was a pedestrian fatality at Wolf and Invenus, in case that was not something you were aware of. So, I request you to please prioritize this. We can't operate on timelines as usual that pushes this out to the next school year. Hopefully, you can do everything you can to get commissioned and staffed crossing guards at the schools. I'd also like to request for the pedestrian-activated beacon lights. I know I'd sent a mail about in-crossing lights, and the traffic engineer replied saying that is not as reliable as the beacon lights, and we take beacon lights over anything else. You know, frankly, the crossings are totally unmanned and unprotected with no lights, and it is unsafe for kids right now. I also want to bring to your attention that as these schools are consolidated, the traffic congestion, especially getting into a school on the McClellan pub-stelling corridor, as well as Feria, is quite cumbersome right now, and we could actually use the help of the county sheriffs in easing the traffic congestion rather than writing tickets for parents. I urge the city council to walk by at school drop hours and inspect the chaos around these streets. Where we could use help from the sheriffs is to actually ease the traffic. Instead, the writing tickets and parents that are trying to get kids to school get a ticket instead. So, I urge the city council, please help your constituents that are dropping kids to school are not candidates to be ticketed. They are to be helped to make sure that kids are safe in getting to school. Thank you for your attention to this matter.
Thank you very much, San. And our next speaker is Jenny. Welcome, Jenny.
Thank you, Mayor Darcy. Hi, I'm Jennifer Griffin, and I just wanted to bring up something. I find this whole thing about the housing element, HCD, and all of the housing bills that the governor signed about three weeks... two weeks ago, I think they're all interrelated. I mentioned, I think at a previous meeting in oral communications, that the bottom of the text of AB 2097, which is the parking minimums bill by Laura Friedman that the governor signed, you know, eight, 10 days ago, and AB 2011, which is the Buffy Wicks build housing on any commercial strip bill, both of these bills have two to three paragraphs at the end of the bill in the text referring to other bills, their passage. There's another bill that they both refer to, which is about the housing element. I think it's 2353, and I think it's Buffy's also. But I'm beginning to wonder why a standalone bill is referring to another bill inside of its text. Is there something here that the public is not supposed to know about? The part that's really concerning is if you read the bottom of this text, they... 2097 refers to if 2011 passes, if AB 204053, which is the housing element bill, passes, then AB 2097 will do something. And the same on and on with these other bills. Why... I would like to have these politicians explain to the public why these bills are not standalone bills. Why are they referring to other bills in their text? And I understand someone told me that these bills were signed as a package. Well, I'm sorry, the package part of this has been left to discovery by the public, and I don't really feel comfortable that there has been full transparency in what these bills are supposed to be doing. I felt for a long time that there was some sort of a secret agenda. The fact that both 2097 parking minimums and 2011, that let's build housing anywhere in the state on commercial, are pointing to a housing element bill makes me really wonder, does that mean that the housing element, whether a city certifies or not, can these bills be invoked in January of 2023?
15 seconds.
Because they are now legal, can they be pulled in by developers in the housing element? Mountain View was just not certified by HCD. San Francisco is not certified. I think that we're being jerked around here if we don't...
Thank you very much, Jenny. And next, we go to our live speakers with blue cards. And so, the first speaker is Nia Rica Amani. Welcome, Nia Rica.
Mayor, she has a presentation that just... She'll just need to hook up really quickly.
Okay, sounds good.
Good evening, council. My name is Naharika. I'm an intern for Councilmember Way. And this summer, I did a research project just analyzing the LED lighting improvements project, and I'm here to present my findings. All right, so just a brief introduction to the project itself. The project is centered around sustainability, and the goal is to transition the city-based induction system to LED infrastructure entirely. This both satisfies the city's own ordinances for dark-skylighting, and generally, over 2,500 lights will be modified across the city. Just a brief background into dark-skylighting in general. So, dark-skylighting works by directing the light downwards instead of into the atmosphere around it, which has been shown historically to reduce light pollution as a whole. This signifies a long-awaited step to sustainability if the city decides to move forward with the project, and it also signifies how the city is willing to hold itself to the same standards that it holds private institutions. So, just a quick budgeting and financial analysis that I have prepared beforehand. When you talk about the budget in this project, it's really important to look at both the short-term costs and the long-term savings. So, the total conversion cost in the short term would be about $1 million to $1.3 million. This actually airs on the lower side for such a project. San Jose did a very similar project, and they spent about $11 million while modifying about 10 times the lights that Cupertino plans to modify. So, this shows that the cost for the project is actually quite reasonable. So, here I have a set of graphs that was prepared by Tanco Lighting, and I think they're very well-prepared, and they really show how much the city can save in terms of implementing this project. So, here you can see that the maintenance costs for the existing system are always a lot higher than the maintenance cost for the new system, and you save hundreds of thousands of dollars by converting. Additionally, here's the graph showing the break-even point in terms of the long-term savings, and you can see that in about 20 years or so, you save about $2 million in annual costs. This is another graph showing the cumulative of opportunity costs. You can see that after 25 years, you can save more than... It'll cost you more than 250K if you do stick with the current induction-based lighting system. So, in terms of sustainability, LED is a very important step. It achieves energy savings by 50% to 70% greater than injection lighting, and the need for action is really apparent as about 15 million tons of CO2 are generated per year by unsustainable outdoor lighting, according to the National Geographic. So, in North America alone, LED... Sorry, light pollution is increasing steadily by about 6% per year, and dark-skylighting actually helps to solve this problem by directing the light towards the ground and shielding the top and sides of the light bulb itself. So, this is just a quick cost-benefit analysis, according to my findings as a whole. So, the costs are very short-term. It costs about $1 to $1.3 million, and the project will take about seven to eight years to break even. But in the long term, you will save about $2 million in terms of just long-term savings as a whole, and this does mitigate the effects of light pollution in Cupertino. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Very well done, and appreciate it, Naharika.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we have Rick Kitson. Welcome, Rick.
My name is Rick Kitson. I'm the executive director for the Cupertino Chamber of Commerce. Our organization has hosted the Baera Diwali Festival for 19 years, most recently on Saturday, October 8th. That morning, I got a call that Mr. Steven Scharf was upset that he did not have a booth at Diwali. Although there are no records of Mr. Scharf ordering a booth, it is understandable that he was disappointed, since candidates always attend festivals in Cupertino. Later, Councilmember Kitty Moore told me that an urgent matter needed immediate attention. She told me and three sheriff's deputies that candidates are not allowed to have booths, nor bring signs, brochures, or any other campaign material, and insisted that they all be removed. This entire exchange was witnessed by a Dia TV reporter and also by sheriff's deputies with body cams, and I'm sorry that I don't have that body cam footage available for this meeting. Because of Councilmember Moore's insistence and city staff, which had been put on the spot, the deputies indicated... spot, the deputies indicated that they would issue tickets unless all political signs were removed from the festival. The city council and school board candidates decided to pack up and leave. Enforcement of individual councilmember instructions is a very real problem and has exposed the city to significant legal risk under Section 1983 of the United States Code, in addition to simply being a violation of the Cupertino Municipal Code. The overriding concern is that Councilmember Moore's own political priorities were the impetus for her successful insistence that the candidates she does not support remove their signs and brochures. This looks very bad for the community, the city, and for City Council. It is hoped that with the prudent judgment of the council and the guidance of professional staff, that the situation will be addressed and avoided in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Rick. And our next speaker is Jenny Wong. I have a blue card filled out for you, Jenny.
Dear council members and guests, and I'm a member of the Wong family, and since the beginning, we ask a third-party neutral party and due process, and we still haven't got it. We have the legal buildup, and it was took down. And first, when actually, city actually top manager at that time, he was, because only a few square foot off, they say it was okay. But second time was according to whatever the city rule tells us to do, and it was a take-down, took away, and even the belongings without notice. And because we speak up, and there's also retaliation now, even they imposing the inflated the legal fee as well. And we here again ask for the due process, ask for the neutral person, and we can talk to, since we are long-term residents, and we haven't had any development in the place at all, and that only the new buildup was taken away. And this, no direct neighbor was, they actually gave us blessing on it, and there's no buildup in the back as well, and only ninety-some square foot plate structure. So again, ask for the ombudsman or any neutral person, we can work out and immediately seeing out. And I have actually interpreter, and he can speak better than me on basically the similar stuff here, so that's him right now. Okay, go ahead.
Okay, hello. Good evening. My name is Peter Morris. I'm a longtime friend of Ms. Wang. I'm, as a witness, what I've seen happen is that last December, that without warning or permission, a demolition crew arrived on her property, the backyard, targeting a structure which had been a point of contention with the city for some years. And after taking it down, then there was a, the next step was a contention regarding, say, various legal costs and fines, which were being overseen by a legal firm in San Francisco that was delegated the responsibility of overseeing this. Ms. Wang, apart from whatever costs that she lost in the structure itself, has now been bombarded with massive legal fees, court filings, not to mention the amount of time that she's had to take going to court when the COVID has limited the accessibility. It would be totally punitive for the city to continue to be able to pressure her to be able to pay more when she's already been hit significantly on a financial basis. And apart from being a single woman who's in essence has done nothing in the first instance of arriving to be able to cause any such actions, again, she also oversees her parents, and I would question whether there was really any point or benefit for the city to be able to continue this. And ask that you have some sort of dialogue with the legal firm to find out if there's a much more peaceful way to be able to resolve this, rather than just simply continuing to go and just make.
Thank you very much. That's the time for this commentary, and we will go to our next speaker, and that is Rhoda Frye. Thank you, Jenny, and welcome, Rhoda.
Hi, I'm Rhoda Frye. Just want to comment briefly on the comments of the preceding speaker. I found them to be opportunistic, and my understanding is that the signage concern had to do with signs posted in the ground, not books. But anyway, I want to get on to my main topic. I'm going to talk about elections and land use. Our ballots are misleading Cupertino voters, and we are waiting for a correction from the county registrar. Candidates who participate in voluntary campaign spending lists get a diamond next to their name. Three candidates who got diamonds did not deserve them. They each raised around $50,000, some of it coming from special interests. In fact, the special interests collectively dwarfed the entire campaign of other candidates. Transparency in election is central to our democracy. This election will ultimately have to do with how our city is developed. I'm not just talking about the 50 or so acres of Valco. I'm talking about Lehigh's 3,500 acres that are up for grabs for new land uses. A number of industries are now considering the property, which is accessed by rail with a sizable rail yard. Supervisor Semidian has indicated that the land use up there would be something less impactful than the cement plant. Refineries in the East Bay are less impactful than the cement plant. We must be prepared to advocate for appropriate land use. Now I'll tell you a cautionary tale and step back to February 1992 at Cupertino's planning commission, where I was, right next door. Lehigh, then owned by Kaiser Cement, announced the developer's vision of the century, of the, sorry, the developer's vision of the city of the 21st century. The ambitious plan would build up to 3,200 homes, served entirely by public transportation, eliminating the need for cars. Naturally, this project would necessitate annexing the property from an incorporated accounting to city. Prior to this announcement, all the pieces were in place to make it happen. In 1985, quarry executive Tom Lagan served on the county board of supervisors and attempted to relax housing density on hillsides. County council said he could vote, but the FPP disagreed. Around 1990, former quarry employee Barb Carpel served on our city council and the backbed board. When she ran for supervisor, Semidian outed her for taking too much money from her former employer and for not reporting a contribution from Assemblyman Jim Canadian, who later became a consultant for Lehigh. So now, the task at hand is about considering, the county is considering new uses there. We know the county has not been there for us in 2019. They told us a legal truck between the two quarries was legal. It was not. Thanks to our city council, we put an end to this. And this is why transparency in elections and land use are inextrudably connected. We need to keep our eyes.
Thank you, Rhoda. That's three minutes. And so Madam City Clerk, I think you had indicated that there was one email that had come in during the time of the first speaker, and so if you would read three minutes of that, and also indicate from what member of the public this is from.
Yes, Mayor, I was handed an email from a member of the public here, from Ann Esit, and it is as follows. Dear Mayor Paul, Vice Mayor Chow, Councilmember Willie, and Councilmember Moore, I hope the council will continue to look into the finances of the city and get Cupertino on track and bring it into the digital age, regardless of the outcome of the election. It is hard to believe that the city had evergreen contracts that went unexamined and verbal contracts without deliverables until the current council did some investigating. Verbal contracts and evergreen contracts are bad on so many levels. Things change, and contracts need to be examined and adjusted, depending on circumstances and economics. I would argue that this way of doing business is patently absurd. Some argue that the city no longer has a good relationship with nonprofits, including a former mayor. Well, I would probably want to maintain a good relationship with the city if I was getting money for no reason. I am happy that the gravy train is coming to an end. To Mayor Paul and Councilmember Willie, I want to express my appreciation for all that you've done over the last years to improve our city. You have been honest when it was painful. You have been spent time away from your children, listening to whining residents, dealt with messy personnel issues, and been pressured by big-money interests all for the common good. Thank you. Best regards, Brooke Esit.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk, and thank you to Brooke. Let's go to our next item on the agenda, and that should be under reports by council and staff. Item number four is a set of brief reports on councilmember activities and brief announcements. And so I'll remind my colleagues, these should be about a minute each, and so I'll go by a show of hands on Zoom, please, so that I can have a common frame of reference. If anybody would like to give some brief reports on their councilmember activities and brief announcements ever since October 4th, when we last had a regular meeting. And so the order will be Councilmember Way, followed by Vice Mayor Chow, Councilmember Way.
Thank you, Mayor Paul. So very briefly, October 10th, I attended the Finance and Administrative Committee Meeting of Silicon Valley Clean Energy. It's really a committee meeting that pre-cues the board meeting, so we examine the finance reports and administrative practices, so that it is really very transparent. Silicon Valley Clean Energy is doing very well.
Sorry, Councilmember Way, this is the non-committee reports at this time?
Right. This is not like, I'm not on the committee. This is kind of a sort, a different committee.
Okay.
It's not my official committee, sorry.
Okay, no worries.
And yeah, and it's because Councilmember Willie is on the official committee. This is like a part committee, so it's not my assignment.
Okay.
Another one is, we attended the Cal Cities Pedestrian Division Executive Board Committee, so it's also not on my assignment. It's planning for the next seminar, so I'm hoping that every one of you can attend. And the third one is October 11th, I attended the Silicon Valley Community Foundation's Annual Meeting Report. It is really a very good foundation that helps a lot of nonprofit in Silicon Valley and some in our own city, and I really enjoyed their report. And October 13th, I attended the Footy of the Enza Foundation's town hall that reported what the Footy Foundation does. It is very important education in, organization in our community, so we have a good relationship with them. I really think our students are doing very well at the Enza of Footy, and the foundation is raising money to help the students. And I think that's it. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much, Councilmember Way. And next we have Vice Mayor Chow.
Hi. I'd like to take this time to address something happened. I'm reading an email that I sent to the city clerk. I'm told by some Cupertino residents about this rule. No campaign sign, yard signs can touch the ground on property.
Our city attorney wishes to speak.
Can I respond?
I'm afraid that this item is not on the agenda this evening, Vice Mayor Chow.
I thought with this item, we can respond to public comment that the issue brought up.
You.
If there is confusion, I think we should correct misinformation.
No, I'm afraid that this item is not on the agenda, so having a discussion of it wouldn't be appropriate at this time.
It's just my comment. We are not having a discussion.
Your comment is, would be discussing something that's not agendized.
But we often respond, right?
I'm advising you that it would be inappropriate to have this discussion at this time.
Let's move on to another topic, and just to clarify, the follow-ups are really direction to count.
A device taken. Councilmember Moore does apply even harsher rules to other volunteers of council candidates. Yard signs not on stake are not even allowed to touch the ground. And that's the information I actually consulted with the city attorney and the city clerk, and I was confused about this rule also, that I want to make it clear.
Okay, thank you, Vice Mayor, and we will next go to Councilmember Willie.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Well, I kind of thought I'd be the tail end. Nobody has mentioned the Diwali Festival on Saturday, the 8th. Wow, it was so great to see so many people come back. We had it last year, but it really didn't have the numbers that this year had and the number of booths, and so I was really pretty energized by how much it has come back. I'd also like to just mention, you know, there was the one resident talking about the structure removal. I would just suggest that they contact the city attorney, and maybe the city attorney can provide some more narrative to the associate of the person. We want to make sure the residents do in fact get to where they can get the answers that they are seeking. So I'll just mention it in that regard. Thank you very much, Mayor. Good for now.
Thank you, Councilmember Willie. Next we have Councilmember Moore.
All right. Thank you, Mayor Paul. So on October 7th, I attended the Women in Construction Career Event, and that was put on by the NorCal Carpenters Union, and there I got to operate a mobile crane, which was pretty exciting. And I got to check out some modern surveying equipment, and the event is put on to encourage women to get into the construction trades, and there was a great turnout, and I wish them the best. Thank you.
Great. Thanks very much, Councilmember Moore. I have a few items to report of, I think, some interest. Former mayor of Los Angeles, Antonio Villarogosa, was tapped by Governor Newsom to reach out to, you know, various cities across the state to talk about the allocation of California of the $100 billion in federal infrastructure money that's coming. And so Mayor Villarogosa invited a few of us, including Mayor Pat Burt, and a few of the other mayors in this area to have an initial discussion, and so that was very productive on October 5th. On October 7th, the Historical Society of our city had an exhibit opening. It was entitled Dorshana, which came, of course, the day before the Diwali Festival, which was mentioned. On October 8th, I and, I think at least one of my colleagues participated in the double 10-day ceremony, which was at the county headquarters. And I also attended the Women in Trades event with Councilmember Moore, and I had invited Vice Mayor Chow as well, but, you know, I think scheduling conflicts prevented that. So those are my item four report outs. And so we are now on to item five, which is our report on committee assignments. And this is our set of reports for our formal committee assignments, which are going to be changing at the end of December. And so let's go to hands on Zoom again for these reports on the various representations that we have throughout the county and area. And so I don't see any hands raised yet, so let me go. Actually, there's, Councilmember Willie has a hand raised. Councilmember Willie.
Yeah, I'm happy, happy to go first if there's no other hand. So we did have our, Silicon Valley Clean Energy had our monthly meeting and update. Although there are several different topics, the ones that mean the most to me are the ones that, you know, the community can get more engaged with, and that is the new construction reach codes, and that's always a prime topic until we get all the cities to pass it. We approved our update to our Muni code right before this meeting in the study session, so that we are one of the several that now have already passed that update. And then the Silicon Valley Clean Energy is continually reinforcing that the goal is 100% carbon-free by 2035. You know, we'd actually like it to happen sooner, but based on the state's requirements and what we feel we can achieve, the 2035 is at least the target on paper. Silicon Valley Clean Energy also has a very highly rated website for community information. Come and see what grants are available, what ways you can do to reduce your energy consumption, and it's called E-Hub. So just go to the Silicon Valley Clean Energy website, and you'll see the different links, and you can open up any of them that are of interest to you. So that's it for this week. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Willie. Next we have Councilmember Moore.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Paul. So on the 13th of October, I chaired the VTA PAC, and most of our discussion was about how to consider geographic distribution in the 2016 Measure B Bike and Pedestrian Planning Studies Competitive Grant Program Criteria. And we had a really interesting discussion about how to work with the point scoring that they have for each of the criteria items, and we weighed the pros and cons of moving numbers around, and ultimately, we decided that we did not need to hold it to 100-point total score, and we increased it to 105, so that the tiebreaker, which had been geographic distribution, became a criteria item, and that is our recommendation to the board for VTA, which Mayor Paul sits on, so you'll be seeing our suggestions coming up in the future. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you very much, Councilmember Moore. And I don't see further hands raised, and so I will briefly report out that on October 6th, we did have our VTA board meeting. and so I will briefly report out that on October 6th, we did have our VTA board meeting. On October 13th, we had the Santa Clara County Cities Association Board Meeting. Unfortunately, I had a conflict scheduling the board meeting, and so I thank both Councilmember Moore and Vice Mayor Chow, who is my alternate on the Cities Association Board, for attending that in my stead. And so I don't see further hands raised at this time, and so Vice Mayor Chow, you are now raising your hand. Do you care to report out on item five, please?
So, yeah, I attended the Cities Association as alternate. Initially, I have a conflict with another board meeting that I am a member of, but then I left that board meeting in order to join the Cities Association around 7:30. Fortunately, there was an important item of Cities Association is going to form a joint powers authority, and we asked for a comparison table between JPA and 501(c)(3). And the reason given for JPA was they do a lot of advocacy, which is not allowed in 501(c)(3), and, but I'm not, I think we need more transparency on what kind of advocacy that they do to justify to form a JPA, and I hope that more information will be coming, and then once the agreement is approved, it will come to all the city council for approval so that they can form the new JPA. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Vice Mayor Chow. We are on to item number six, and this is our report on subcommittee assignments, and so I will look to my colleagues to see if there are any report outs on any subcommittees that we sit on. And Councilmember Moore, your hand is raised, did you want to report out on any subcommittee assignments?
I'll defer to someone's.
Councilmember Moore defers at this time. I do have one request. I believe that one of our hires that will be directly assisting city council will be the legislative aide. My understanding is that that request for applications is out right now. I had had a discussion with our city manager last week, and the recommendation was if council wants to get involved in a part of the interviewing process for the legislative aide, then the suggestion be that we form a subcommittee, and so I would like to have that as a future item on our agenda, perhaps on November 1st, to discuss a subcommittee for that purpose. So that is my subcommittee request. I don't believe I have subcommittee report outs, but let me think for a moment. I did have a really excellent meeting, in addition to the really, I want to thank you, City Manager Wu, for the quality of the meetings that we've been having over the course of your tenure here thus far. But in addition to that, I don't think that was a subcommittee meeting that had to do with 10455 Torrey Avenue with Director Morley and Susan, which we have discussed earlier this evening. And so, no, I don't think I have subcommittee assignment report outs here beyond that, and so let me look to our hands on Zoom. The order will be Councilmember Moore, Councilmember Willie, followed by Vice Mayor Chow. Councilmember Moore.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Paul. So as you know, Councilmember Willie and myself are on the City Hall Subcommittee. We met on October 13th to go over parking and space planning, and our next meeting will be on the, around the 27th, I believe, but it is regarding funding and recommendations. So far, we've gone over structural analysis, the EOC, as came to us earlier in this meeting this evening, and we've talked about parking and programming. So the other subcommittee is the Community Grants Subcommittee, which I'm on with the Vice Mayor and the Chair of the Parks and Rec Committee, and the Vice Chair, so it's Chair Mina Shu and the Vice Chair Sashi Bagur, and we met, we've met twice, we met on the 7th and the 17th of October, and had a very robust discussion, and we made some recommendations to modify the grant program, which the Parks and Rec Director Sanders will be bringing back in a few weeks, and I want to, again, congratulate Director Sanders for the promotion. We also recommend that, Sander, I'm sorry, we also recommend that council appoint that the same subcommittee is given the task of reviewing and making recommendations to the festival fee waiver policy, and then bring those recommendations back before the next list of projects comes to council for approval, and as we recall, the fee festival waivers were approved within the budget, so they came to council back in June for approval. So that is our recommendation, and I can bring that up again in future agenda items to have that happen. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Moore. Next we have Councilmember Willie.
Yeah, I'll thank Councilman Moore for that update on the seismic upgrade. I'll just add that earlier tonight, we talked about the Torrey Building, 10455, which, we're talking about moving the EOC out of City Hall over to the Torrey Building, since we didn't have the public attending that earlier one, at least letting them know, and what that does for City Hall is it reduces the structural requirements for the seismic upgrade, and that means dollars and cents, you know, so great, but then I'll also do a quick one, that also frees up a lot of space now for our city manager to work with the layout and the headcount for City Hall. So now we'll finish the City Hall seismic upgrade and come back with a recommendation, hopefully at the end of November, and things are looking really good, so I'll leave it at that. Thank you again, Councilman Moore.
Thank you, Councilmember Willie. Next we have Vice Mayor Chow.
So I attended the mayor's commission, meeting with commissioner this month, and so I attend that bi-monthly. Commissioners all give the feedback that they really appreciate the staff liaison, that they, that's serving each commission, that they have been really phenomenal in providing information for them. So thanks to all the staff liaison for your service with the commissioners. And then, I think we had two meetings of Community Grant Subcommittee. We have recommended a guideline that will be coming to the council, and the Subcommittee then will look at the festival guideline next. And I think there was a Subcommittee request to form a Subcommittee for the homeless issue that I would like to make that request, and I think we have city plan to end homeless, what's the status of that? And I think we really need to look at cities' own outreach team, like some other cities have, maybe a Subcommittee can first study these options. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Chow, and we will go on at this time to, and I see Councilmember Moore, your hand is still raised, is that from previous? Okay, great, thanks very much. Item number seven is our city manager update, City Manager Wu.
Thank you, Mayor Paul. Several updates. The first one is the happy news, and Councilmember Moore actually stole my thunder, so I am pleased to announce that we officially promoted Rachelle Sander to the Parks and Recreation Department Director. After an extensive and hard search, we think, I am confident that we found the right person, so please join me in welcoming Rachelle to the new capacity, and I couldn't get enough emails from the community thanking us and thanking her for her services. Following on that, Public Works has several updates. Public Works staff has been doing a number of outreach efforts regarding three CIP projects. First of them is the revitalizing Memorial Park project, and then the all-inclusive playground in Jellyman Park, and also the latest design option for the Lawrence Smithy Park and Trail. In addition to that, Public Works staff has been and will be begin to start the first phase of the annual pavement project on our streets, so I ask Public's patience and also your understanding, if any traffic delay or inconvenience is caused by the late closure, we're getting a better street out of this. Wanted to report out that the city's fraud, waste, and abuse hotline is now officially launched. All city staff and city council, thank you for your time, has completed the training that's conducted by our internal auditor, Moss Adams, last week. And also just to know that the Santa Clara County Registrar of Voters has begun mailing vote-by-mail ballots to all registered voters for the November 8 election, and the official ballot drop boxes are now officially located in front of City Hall as well as Quinlan Center. In terms of the unhoused individual on portal, just wanted the community to turn out, to know that Mayor Paul and the city team will be discussing the matters and also just meeting with the concerned residents tomorrow. And also just a few follow-ups from the previous meeting that the council asked to have the pre-approved ADU design vendors, and also some homeless assistance program information to be posted on city's website, and that has been done. And in regard to the home sharing program, I did confirm with the planning staff that that will be a program identified and also incorporated into the housing element. So when the draft document is ready, council will have further consideration of these programs. That wraps up my report for today. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much, City Manager Wu, and I do see a hand raised, but typically we don't take comments or questions, unfortunately, Councilmember Moore, for the city manager update in the interest of the summary of time, but of course, there's offline communication if you wanted to follow up on a point of inquiry. Item number eight is a department update, and so that was something that I had implemented earlier this year with regard to giving the public a sense of what's going on in the various departments in the city, and City Manager Wu, when you arrived, you have, I think to really good effect, added a few other of the divisions in the city. We've had the Economic Development Manager, and now I believe today you would like to provide an update or have someone from staff provide an update on the city manager's office.
Thank you, Mayor Paul. So I took the liberty of expanding that department updates to not just on focusing on the five departments that you are usually encountered with, but also city manager's office has many, many different functions, so today I would like to have Astrid providing the council and also members of public an overview of what the city manager's office do. Astrid, take it away.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and councilmembers. I'm Astrid Robles, the Acting Assistant to the City Manager, and I will be presenting the department update on the city manager's office, and will also go over some of the items I am currently working on, so I will share my screen. So to start things off, here's the current organizational chart for the city manager's office. This includes all full-time employees and shows the current vacancies as well. As many of you know, we have had a lot of turnover this past year, which has been challenging, but the divisions continue to work on their many projects on a regular basis. We are currently recruiting for some of these positions, including the Legislative Aid, which was approved by council during the budget adoption process. Next, I will be giving a brief overview of each division, starting with the City Clerk Office. The Clerk's Office is responsible for maintaining city records and serves as the Compliance Officer for federal, state, and local statutes, including the Political Reform Act, the Brown Act, and the Public Records Act. The City Clerk also oversees all election proceedings, including helping candidates meet qualifications, and overseeing campaign finance reporting. With the elections right around the corner, they will be very, very busy with this for the coming week. Additionally, they work on a variety of programs listed here, including onboarding commission and committee members, registering lobbyists, and preparing and overseeing all council, commission, and committee agendas. Next we have the Sustainability Division, who recently completed the update to the Climate Action Plan on August 16th, 2022, apologies for the typo here. The Climate Action Plan serves as a roadmap for the division activities, and they're currently work underway with implementing actions from the Climate Action Plan 2.0, including an ordinance establishing a streamlined permit process for EV charging stations, a partnership with CDD that is up for second reading later tonight, actually. The Sustainability Division also supports a variety of projects with Public Works, incorporating sustainability features into construction projects. The Division is also responsible for a number of community-facing programs related to drought, Earth and Arbor Day Festival, and community engagement. Next we have the Emergency Management Division, who is responsible for emergency operations and planning, which includes response coordination, planning, and training for all hazard. They coordinate the block leader program and work with other volunteer organizations for part of the Citizen Corps program. This year, they have provided nine personal emergency preparedness trainings for city residents and volunteers, and have provided emergency preparedness guides in six different languages that are posted on the city website. The Division also has worked with both school districts in Cupertino, the plan for a coordinated response to school safety or security incident. Additionally, they will be having their annual public safety forum next week on October 26th, which is in coordination with the Public Safety Commission. And next we have the Office of Communications, which is actually made up of two divisions, communication and video. Their mission is to give Cupertino residents access timely, engaging, and important information. They reach out to and communicate with residents, businesses, and community members daily through various platforms, including the scene, items of interest, press releases, email notifications, social media, the city channel, promotional videos, and the Engage Cupertino website, just to name a few. They also facilitate and execute various city events, such as the Cupertino Library Expansion Gala, ribbon cutting, the Crest Awards Ceremony, and also support other divisions event, division events, such as the Public Safety Forum and the Earth and Arbor Day Festival. Internally, they also support all city divisions and departments by helping develop outreach and marketing plans for specific qualities, policies, or programs, and also they provide video and Zoom support for all city council meetings and commissioning committee meetings. Next we have Economic Development, which I will briefly touch on, since Nina gave such a wonderful presentation on her division at the last meeting. She is a strong advocate for the business community and continues to work on expanding cities' outreach efforts through surveys, PerceBOP program, and the Business Connect newsletter. We look forward to seeing her bring forward these upcoming initiatives, including the online Cupertino store and the Economic Development Committee. Lastly, we have the Administrative Branch of the City Manager's Office, which is currently made up of our city manager, an executive assistant, and myself. I work on facilitating the city work program process from its beginning stages to its adoption, then all the way through the year with quarterly update. I also work on the city's Legislative Affairs, which includes working with the Legislative Review Committee and our state lobbyists to take positions on state legislation and review the legislative platform. Additionally, I tackle certain policies and procedures like the adoption of the no-smoking ordinance from last year to the update of the Commissioner's Handbook. This year, I am working on bringing in an update on the smoking ordinance and on developing the Safe Gun Storage Ordinance, which is part of the fiscal year 2223 city work program. As part of my presentation this evening, I also wanted to briefly mention that the city work program dashboard is currently updated with information beginning from fourth quarter of fiscal year 2122. The dashboard can be viewed at Cupertino.org/cityworkprogram. I will also be providing council with a memo that wraps up the fiscal year 2122 city work program by next week, that will also be published on the city work program website. Here's a little snapshot of the status of city work program items from the last fiscal year. As you can see, we have completed 15 items while others are still pending, but the majority of items are multi-year and will continue to be worked on during this fiscal year. One of the other projects I'm currently working on from the fiscal year 2223 city work program is a student internship program. This is a program that the mayor piloted this summer, where four high school interns participated and volunteered at many city events, including the Mayor's Challenge, the Angel Island excursion, and the library expansion, just to name a few. I will be bringing a report to council with details of the pilot summer program, summer internship program at the next November 1 city council meeting. And that concludes my presentation, thank you so much for your time.
Great, thanks very much, Astrid. So this is a question for our city attorney, Chris. We have a blue card from the public asking to speak on the city manager's report, however, that's not our typical practice, and so are there legal requirements that are involved here?
No, it's the city manager's report that was not, and their items discussed during the report are not agendized items, they, there is an opportunity to address those issues during oral communications, so there's, legally speaking, there is not a requirement that we reopen oral communications at this time.
Okay, well, I'll tell you what, to our member of the public on this one, I'm getting a thumbs. a thumbs up, but if, you know, the hour is young at the end of the night, we do have an item in oral communications, and so please feel free to remind us at that time, and we'll open that up for that availability. So thanks very much for your understanding, and thank you, Mr. City Attorney, for that clarification. We are on to our consent calendar. These are items nine through 14, and reminding the public that under postponements and orders of the day, there was a motion that was passed to go ahead and move item 17 over to the consent calendar as well. And so here's an opportunity for, you know, any requests to remove items from the consent calendar from my fellow council members, or following that, we will go ahead and take omnibus comments if there are any people that would like to speak on any of the items on consent, but it is not polled. And so let me, let me go by hands, and I do see a hand raised from Vice Mayor Chow. Actually, before I go to Vice Mayor Chow, let me go to our City Clerk, because I believe, Madam City Clerk, there was a request from a member of the public, is that correct, to pull an item off of the consent calendar?
Yes, Mayor, we received an email from Annie Yang from the Santa Clara Valley Audubon Society to pull item 14 regarding the golf course maintenance contract.
Okay, so advised, and so let's go to Vice Mayor Chow at this time. Vice Mayor Chow, did you want to speak to any of the items on consent as a request to pull the item? Your microphone, please.
That was what I was going to pull, because I received a comment about this contract that, yeah, I would like to discuss.
Request for item 14? Okay.
I think we, since we placed an item that wasn't on the consent to the consent agenda, I think we need to inform the public who would like to speak on that item, what's their process. I think they can still comment as part of this big consent agenda.
That's correct. So let me go ahead and...
Clarify that, because we covered that last time, but didn't really mention that.
Okay, let's, let's clarify that at this point. So within the rules of procedure, we're allowed to put items that are on the regular agenda, as long as it's not a hearing or an ordinance item, onto the consent. That was done for item number 17, and so let me go ahead, and Vice Mayor Chow makes an excellent point. The subject is the consideration of reviewing crosswalk options across Rodriguez Avenue in the vicinity of the public pedestrian walkway easement through Track 9405, also known as the Campo de Lozano subdivision.
Sorry.
And the other is the review of the proposed language for signage to be posted. And so I just want to remind the members of the public that if you want to speak on this item and it's not pulled off of the consent calendar, we have an opportunity to speak to consent generally. And I hear my city attorney clearing his throat, and I think Chris wants to speak on this.
Yeah, I mean, if the issue, if I understand the concern correctly, it's that, it's that item number 17, there wasn't an opportunity to comment on it, but I believe the postponements and orders of the day are before oral communications, so there has been an opportunity to comment on it.
Okay, with regard to, but it is on the consent calendar, however, right?
Correct, yes.
Okay, so, so if someone wants to speak to it as a general item on consent calendar, that's an opportunity as well?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, okay, great. Well, thank you for that clarification and reminder, City Attorney Jensen, and so we'll go ahead and have item 14 off the consent. I will now invite any public comment on any item that is on consent that has not been taken off. And so just to remind everyone, that is nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, and 17, because 17 has been added to consent. And 14 has been taken off, and so that will be considered in due order. Are there any members of the public that would like to speak to any of those items that are on the consent calendar? And again, that's nine through 13 and 17. I see a hand raised in the, in the chambers, and I also see a hand raised on Zoom. So Sima Linskog, your hand is raised on Zoom. I'll remind the members of the public that if you raise your hand on Zoom, or if you hand in a blue card by the time that the first person is done speaking, then we will call on you. I have the blue card from the member of the public here. So now we have two members of the public on Zoom, Sima, as well as Herve Marcy, and Jennifer Shirin has a blue card in, in the council chambers. And so, Sima, welcome. You'll have three minutes. Oh, and I'll also remind our members of the public, if you want to have three minutes, or up to three minutes rather, of your comments read into the record by the city clerk, please email cityclerk@cupertino.org during this time that the first person is speaking. Welcome, Sima, you'll have three minutes.
Hi there, can you hear me?
Yes, you're loud and clear.
All right. Hi, everyone, council members. Wanted to comment on agenda item 17 on the consent calendar. We have been speaking to a lot of residents on Rodriguez and in Biltmore Apartments, as well as the condominiums at Waterfall, and they have reiterated to us that they would like to see data collected by the city before any decision is made on whether to put in a crosswalk and where to put the crosswalk, or whether a crosswalk is needed at all, and if a crosswalk is needed, which of the three options is the best option for it. The consensus seems to be also that the signage that the city has proposed meets everyone's needs, so we, we support that signage, but we would like to ensure that the city does go ahead and wait a year and collect data from the time that the Rigna Creek Trail opens and the access path starts getting used, that we collect a year's worth of data to understand if there is a need for a crosswalk, and if so, at what location. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Sima. Our next speaker is Herve Marcy. Welcome, Herve. And welcome. Herve Marcy, you'll need to unmute your microphone to speak.
All right, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, welcome.
Yeah, thank you very much. I would like to second Sima's comment on item number 17. I think it's important for us to understand in terms of usage, getting together some data around the usage of the walkway to Lozano Lane. I think this walkway is going to be very important for all the residents of the Biltmore Complex, like myself, for our kids to go to school at Eaton Elementary. I think our, the director of Eaton Elementary mentioned herself that she would like to see a pedestrian bus to be organized for the kids to go to school safely, and I think that this, this walkway and the crosswalks would be very important for that, and getting some more data, you know, to make that happen would be, would be important. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Herve, and we are to our blue cards now. Madam City Clerk, were there any further blue cards during this time, or were there any people that emailed you at the city clerk@cupertino.org account?
No, Mayor.
Okay, thanks very much. So we have Jennifer Shirin from the public, welcome Jennifer, or I should say, live from the public in the council chambers, welcome.
Finally. It's been a long time. So, thank you for continuing this item and allowing all of us a chance to speak on it, because obviously, it was 11:50 at night when it came out the last time. And also, thank you to the city attorney and City Manager's Office for having allowed that to happen, and for the council members to listen to our city attorney to make sure that we're following all the procedures and doing the right thing. One thing I'd like to say, in addition to what Sima and Herve said, is I think we should trust our staff. The staff are civil engineers, many of them are professional engineers, and as an electrical engineer myself, I know how much training goes into that, and so therefore, I trust them on matters when it comes to, you know, should we get data, should we do things? And so therefore, to me, I think that it's worthwhile to actually listen to them. I also think that the sign that they propose is a good idea with one caveat, which is it currently says, "Walk your bikes on the trail," and but it doesn't make any note the fact that that pedestrian trail, which is always walked on, not biked on, connects to another trail that you are allowed to bike on. So that would be the only thing that I would, I would mention regarding the sign. But I think, and I hopefully you agree with me, that waiting a year to see what happens is the right thing to do, and it's, it's what the staff recommends, and I, and I support that. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer, and that does it for the comments on the consent calendar. And so I'll go ahead and ask for a motion from one of my colleagues for consent items nine through 13, as well as 17. Councilmember Moore, your hand is raised.
So moved.
Councilmember Moore moves the recommended actions on those items, and Councilmember Wei, would you like to second?
Yes, I second.
Okay, there is a motion and a second on the floor. I see a continued hands raised from Councilmembers Wei and Moore, and did you want to, did either of you want to speak on this? And so I don't see...
I did want to make one brief comment.
Okay, so Councilmember Moore wishes to make a comment on the motion on the table.
Okay, so the reason I requested that item 17 be put onto consent was because it was a very thorough staff report, and the recommended action was acceptable, and we appear to have all agreed on that. So I, I really appreciate that, and we, this happened in the last meeting as well. So just keep it up, thanks.
Great, thank you, Councilmember Moore. I echo that sentiment, I think that we're producing really good results here, and so, you know, if we're front-ending a lot of this work, a lot of these sentiments that we have positive things come about as a result of a lot of, you know, later, you know, night, all the cutting off at midnight types of deliberations that we've had. So, yeah, very, very grateful for all of my colleagues and staff's work on, on these items. So I see Vice Mayor Chow has a hand raised. Did you care to provide some commentary on the motion on the table?
Sure. So I think it's a good thing that we, I think the staff recommendation is very thoughtful, that we observe three locations in the next year, so we know the traffic. But I think it's a good thing that we, this was brought to our attention, because otherwise we wouldn't know many people will be crossing that street dangerously. And now we, at least it's something that we are watching out for and studying for. So I think it's important, when residents bring a concern, we don't ignore, we address them to, to evaluate whether there's something we should do or not. So this is an example of that. And, yeah, so I'm looking forward to the trail to be open, but I think people do need to be concerned that, okay, it is public right of way, but it's, it is on private property. Just like Rigna Creek Trail, it is on Water Valley property, so we should respect the property owners when we use their property for our public benefits. So we thank them for providing the public right of way, but we should not take it for granted. When it's a public right of way, I think public agencies should be appreciative of our use of their private property. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much, Vice Mayor Chow, and I don't see any further hands raised at this time, and so let us go to our city clerk to take a roll call vote for the motion that's on the dais.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Wei?
Aye.
Councilmember Willie?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Chow?
Aye.
Mayor Paul?
Yes.
The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much, Madam City Clerk. We're on to item number 14, and so that was pulled off of consent. Item number 14 is to consider the award and authorization to the City Manager to execute a maintenance services contract with Professional Turf Management, that's the name of the entity, Professional Turf Management, for the Blackberry Farm Golf Course. Madam City Manager, would you care to introduce the item or to introduce the staff member who can provide some commentary? Although, you know, before we go to you, Madam City Manager, I think that the member of the public who actually requested this be polled was emailing the council, and so I don't necessarily see that member of the public here. Oh, Annie Yang actually is here. So, so Annie, very briefly, if you could encapsulate the purpose of your request, I know Vice Mayor Chow took up and indicated that you had provided an email, but before we bring this to staff to help frame the staff feedback and commentary of the presentation, if you will, we'd like to give you an opportunity to explicate your purpose for pulling or requesting the item be pulled. So welcome, Annie.
Good evening, Mayor Paul, Vice Mayor Chow, council members, thank you for considering this item. My name is Annie Yang, and I am the Chair of the Environmental Action Committee of the Santa Clara Valley Audubon Society, and I'm also a resident of Cupertino. We noticed that in the new contract's technical specifications, they don't include many of the wildlife protection provisions that were in the 2016 contract. We understand that the council has yet to decide the future of Blackberry Farm Golf Course, but regardless of the future decision, the new maintenance contract should include protections for existing wildlife and for Stevens Creek, which is adjacent to the golf course. We detailed the specific sections that were left out of the current contract in a letter to the council that you mentioned, and we included our recommendations to enhance those sections as well. We included a table within that letter that compared the two documents along with our recommendations, and we hope you can reference that table if you can. So in summary, first, the 2016 document includes specific actions that would ensure compliance with state regulations and protect terrestrial and aquatic life. These are left out of the 2022 document. For example, the 2016 document denotes best practices for protecting birds during nesting season, requiring minimal use of outdoor lighting, and ways to avoid chemical runoff. These sections should be added back. Second, the surveys for nesting birds, they should be, they should be required prior to any tree trimming or any trees on the golf course during nesting season. Third, the section on protection of aquatic life should be retained and updated with the state's recommendations on inappropriate pesticides, as well as, as well as specific practices that protect the creek. And finally, while both documents prohibit chemical, pesticide, or fertilizer runoff, neither require monitoring nor testing. This should be required to ensure runoff actually does not occur in the sensitive area. We hope you add these protections back into the contract. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Annie, and just to signpost the order here, we'll go to staff with a presentation at this time. We will then open it up to the members of the public for the normal commentary period, and then we'll bring it back to council. And so, City Manager Wu, it's your turn.
Thank you, Mayor Paul. Unfortunately, we do not have a presentation, but I do have a response back to the, the Audubon Society, so it is staff's oversight for not including this provision. My understanding is that because of staffing overturns since 2016, for some reason, this section of the RFP was omitted. So I've been informed that if council would consider making a motion to include provision to ensure compliance with wildlife and water quality protection best practices as reflected in the Audubon Society's comment into the motion for approving the contract, and staff's in full support of that. I do have my new director, Rochelle Sander, online to answer any further questions, but we do not anticipate to have a presentation for this item.
Okay, let's go to our members of the public. As I delineated, we have Louise Sedati, as well as Annie Yang, with hands raised. Madam City Clerk, are there any blue cards on this item live?
No, Mayor.
Okay, and so I'll remind our members of the public that you'll have the time that the first person is speaking, or three minutes, whatever's longer, to raise your hand on Zoom, to hand in a blue card live, or to send an email to cityclerkallone word@cupertino.org to have up to three minutes of your commentary read into the record. And so Louise Sedati, welcome. You'll have three minutes. Louise, you'll need to unmute your microphone if you wanted to speak on this item number 14.
Hi, sorry, I did not mean to speak on this item. I meant to speak on the previous item. And there was only, I thought the previous item was going to be item 17, and, and then suddenly, there was only a two-minute window for people to try to get their hand up to speak. In the future, if there's certainly a change in the agenda order, can the public be given more of a notice that there's been a change in the order, and, or can there be at least like a five-minute interval for those of us in the public who were startled by the sudden change in agenda order to get their hand up?
Thank you very much. Your, your points taken and noted, and we'll go ahead and bring this back. I don't see any further, and I promised to, to follow up, but with regard to this item number 14, I'll go ahead and wait the couple of minutes as well while we're bringing it back up to the dais. I don't see uh further unique hands raised here, um, and so Madam City Clerk, I'll check back in with you in a couple of minutes uh with regard to further hands raised, uh or I should say blue cards or our emails to the city uh clerk uh email address. So, um, we do have two um members of council uh that would like to speak on this, or to follow up with questions, I should say. Councilmember Moore followed by Councilmember Willie, Councilmember Moore.
Okay, um, thank you, Mayor Paul, so I would like to hear the, the language that's suggested for the, the motion regarding compliance with uh the wildlife, I believe that they were ordinances, so I would like to hear that. Um, but I had some questions on this item, which I think that it could be followed up with, with just a memo, um, and that's regarding some resolutions I found on PDF pages nine ninety-six and nine ninety-seven, and I can give you those um resolution numbers, they're from uh twenty-ten, I believe, but it was uh ten dash zero four nine, zero five zero, zero five two, zero five four, and zero five five, and those were all regarding, um, those were all regarding water rights and um the uh water, water rights being given to the city and where they could pump water. So I would like to hear more about those water rights and if there's um, if, if we have some right to have a well or something on the, on the Blackberry Farm Golf Course for irrigation, uh perhaps, I'm just kind of curious what happened to these, um, since I haven't um seen this lately, and so that's it, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, um, Councilmember Moore, let's go on, uh, and did anyone from staff want to speak to Councilmember Moore's comment or observations?
Um, I will speak to the recommended um provision to, the recommendation is to include, basically to include additional provision to ensure compliance with wildlife and water quality protection best practices uh in response to the Audubon Society's comments. Um, we could include that in your motion, or you could do a, a generic motion and we'll come back to you, council, just to make sure that you're comfortable with the recommended motion.
Okay, having no motion on the table yet, we'll go ahead and take that under advisement, and Madam City Clerk, I'll check back in with you now that it's a couple of minutes later, um, are there any further uh comments from the public, either in the format of a blue card um or an email?
No, Mayor, we've received nothing.
Okay, um, so I, uh, I, I did see a member of the public actually drop off a blue card a moment ago, so I'm just wondering if that perhaps was for this item here. No? Okay, well, maybe I just um tricks of the eye. All right, thank you very much, Madam City Clerk, I apologize for um, for, for seeing that incorrectly. So um, let's go to uh Councilmember Willie, followed by Vice Mayor Chow, Councilmember Willie.
Yeah, so uh, I agree with what we've heard uh from, you know, the public and the city manager. I would toss out, though, that uh we use the language in the previous contract. You know, I always try and minimize options for confusion, and if we give staff direction that, you know, adhere to what the public comments were, it, it possibly leads to different language in the contract, and now the contractor has to go back and somewhat worry about, you know, what it's going to cost him and, and it's only language, but if we just adhere to the language in the previous contract, as long as the public didn't see any problem with it, then I think we make it much easier for the contractor where he says, bingo, I know what, I know what my costs are, and here's the result. So I would just toss that out as hopefully trying to make this a little bit easier. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Councilmember Willie, and next we have Vice Mayor Chow.
So, um, I wonder, so the current contract expires on December thirty-first, so if we continue, uh, continue the item so the staff can bring back a revision, is uh, do we have sufficient time? This is RFP, it's not contract, so.
So, um, I, I would recommend that council, that, that if council wants to move forward with this contract, and, and we do need a contract in place to do maintenance, that council authorize staff to um discuss, you know, discuss this issue with the um, the successful party in the RFP and reach an agreement with terms that's consistent with policy, council's policy direction, um, rather than um coming back and, and bringing specific language for council review, which, um, you know, it really isn't the role of the council. So, um, I, I would recommend that um, that, that council um give this direction, and it could certainly incorporate um Councilmember Willie's thoughts to, 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 to consider uh what was used in the, the um prior agreement as well, but I, I think that's going to be more efficient and um it create, it will reduce the risk that we get in a situation where we don't um have an agreement that we can execute before this, the current term of the contract runs out.
So, um, so we, because there are, uh, Audubon Society's letter include quite a lot of details, so it's hard, are we, um, so I'm not sure, the city manager's recommendation seems to be including all of these, but that's a lot of them, so.
So, uh, we're, we're um fairly comfortable that we can um in- incorporate tho- those elements into the contract um through sort of, you know, regular oversight and best practices and appropriate language in the contract that will cover, cover those details. You know, um, you know, I, obviously there are two parties to a contract, so um we'll have to discuss the, the, you know, this provision with PTM, but they are currently conducting the maintenance and uh performing according to the standards that the Audubon Society provided, and so we don't anticipate a problem there, but, but we, but we think we'll be able to address it fairly straightforwardly.
Um, maybe I don't understand, this is a request for proposal, so basically, we are specifying what kind of services we need, and then here we will include um protecting nesting birds and these other requirements from two thousand and sixteen to comply with state regulation, as they say. Then suppose the multiple people will bid on that?
Though that, that process, that process has already happened, so, so these, these.
Oh, so we already?
Yeah.
Closed the bid?
Right, that's correct, and so these are, these are not, these would not be additional um uh uh line item deliverables under the contract. Um, these are just clarifications of performance standards, and as you alluded to, um, most of them are requirements of state, federal, or local law already. Um, and, and so it, it's really just clarifying those and making sure that they're.
Probably already doing it, and we are just clarifying in the contract that um you are actually going to do it by the contract.
Right, well, yeah, certainly, I mean, there always going to be a require, there's going to be a requirement that they comply with the law, but there, but um, but there can be value in disp- to spelling these kind of requirements out, and, and so, you know, we do appreciate the input from Audubon Society and, and, and making sure that that's clear.
Great, so how, what, how would the members of our Audubon Society maybe be able to um find out what's the final language? Would that be, it won't be in a future council agenda? Maybe it's posted on the city website?
No, it won't, but it will be available through the city website.
As RFP, they can.
Uh, the contract will be uh, 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 available on the city website.
Mm-hmm, okay, great, thank you.
Where, where on the city website is that available?
Uh, it's through the public records function, um, that's, it's managed by the clerk's office.
Okay, so.
Yeah, yeah, there, there's, 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 there's a, uh, there's, in addition to the ability to submit a public records request, there, there is, there is a public records um tab on the city website, and so archived documents are available there, and um those include um contracts.
Okay, great, so that will be available to people that are simply navigating through that part of the webpage?
Available and searchable for any, any member of the public that was interested, correct?
Okay, excellent, yeah, I, I had a fundamental legal question as to how you get another party that's not here to, you know, basically, you know, get empowered by the council to, to, to agree with our, our staff, but I, I, I think in principle, what we've described is, is workable, you know, and uh, you know, those provisions are being adhered to, you know, of course, thank Audubon Society and their representative Annie uh for pointing that out, um, and uh I don't see further hands raised or new hands raised, but Councilmember Moore, your hand uh is raised, did you want to bring a motion on item fourteen?
Uh, actually, um, when I was looking at the meeting minutes, which I referenced those resolutions from, they appear to just simply be very close in a previous meeting, and it, um, you can, you can look at them, but I don't necessarily think that they're related to the Blackberry Farm. I am curious about them because they are quitclaim deeds for water rights to the city, um, but uh I, I think the Blackberry Farm water rights issue is, is probably going to be separate from those resolutions, but I still want to know um if they did at one point have a well, and um, and then what happened to it. Okay, thank you.
Great, uh, thanks very much, and uh at, at this point, um, I'm going to go ahead and uh check in on our uh other panelists here, um, I'm not sure if uh we still uh have uh Councilmember Willie on the, on the Zoom meeting. Um, so, let's go ahead and uh if uh, if it's okay with everyone, take, take a brief break, uh three minutes, and I want to make sure that uh we do have the full council available for uh if we bring forward a motion, and um, you know, making sure, and, and I just in the interest of full disclosure, Councilmember Willie was actually calling me a moment ago, and so I'm assuming that perhaps he's trying to notify us that he needs to log back in. So we'll take a quick three-minute break, uh, it's eight forty-five on the clock, we'll start again prompt at eight forty-nine, thanks very much, we'll see you soon. And I see that uh Councilmember Willie is on camera, and so, actually, let me turn on my Zoom camera here. Um, and we are on item fourteen, uh, we're continuing uh the discussion, and at this point, I think that we've had a couple of rounds of comments, so I will uh for the purposes of further discussion, uh ask for a motion on this item fourteen. Would anyone like to bring one forward? I'll ask Vice Mayor Chow, would you like to uh, in order to, uh, if your desire is of further discussion, uh bring forward the recommended action for item fourteen? Okay, item fourteen.
I need to do this?
Yes.
Yeah. Um, yeah, I would like to motion that we uh move the staff recommendation with the direction to use the two thousand and sixteen contract with the base so that, since there is no reason to change them, and include all the environmental protection measures from two thousand and sixteen, and in addition, add the uh comments from um Annie Yang in her email and the comprehensive table that she provided, um, so that we continue to protect the environment and the wildlife in the golf course area, because whatever we decide to do with the area, we will continue to protect the environment. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Chow, would anyone like to second that motion? Councilmember Moore, would you like to second?
Um, okay, uh, yes, I'd like to second it, I am looking at the technical provisions um right now from uh the Blackberry Farm Golf Course Maintenance in two thousand and sixteen, so the, the email um from Annie uh did have a footnote, and she referenced the actual pages, it's a, it's five pages long, and um, it, it seems pretty reasonable, there's, I have, do have a question, um, contractors shall meet with staff and representatives annually to review maintenance activities relative to these considerations, those were the wildlife considerations, um, and so they're supposed to meet with city representatives, and, and they're encouraged to meet more frequently as needed to ensure compliance. I'm wondering if that has been happening and um what outcome those, those meetings have been, have, um, have, what that, uh, what the outcome's been, um, but it, it looks, it looks very, very reasonable, um, but I, I would actually like us to take a, a five-minute break for, for the attorney to look at them, um, before we, before we do this, I, I just want to be sure.
So, um, so I mean, we, we have reviewed that, um, and uh I think that, you know, as I said earlier, we will be able to uh, you know, incorporate, we, we, we are optimistic that we will be able to incorporate this direction into an agreement with um, with, with uh PTI.
Okay, and, and through the mayor, if there's anything here that, because a certain amount of time has passed and perhaps some of the, the requests may have changed due to uh science advances, uh will you please give it a, a look over in, in case there's anything to, to that nature that perhaps we need to have some improvements? Um, I, I've been uh concerned about um what kind of fertilizer is used uh for some time because of the, the creek being right adjacent to, to the golf course, and you, I know we've all heard about golf courses being a potential source for contamination of the watershed, so if you could um look at that with an eye towards uh protecting the environment and make sure that we're doing the right thing, I appreciate that.
Okay, great, thank you very much, Councilmember Moore, and um, City Manager Wu, you had your, did, did you want to make a comment on that, or?
Mayor Paul, just want to follow up with uh Councilmember Moore, that um directors and the other staff confirmed that they have been regularly meeting with the contractor to review um the practice and update it if necessary.
Okay, and I did see uh Director Sanders with her uh camera on a moment ago, and so I guess you've uh relayed that, that uh information over, and so uh, Councilmember Moore, your hand is still raised in Zoom, and did you want to uh further comment at this time? You've um seconded the motion that's on the table.
Yes, so I, I did second it, and I really appreciate um getting that feedback and knowing that they are having those meetings, I think that's great, thank you.
Okay, great, well, uh, thanks very much, and I will uh go ahead and um call the question for item fourteen, there's a motion and a second on the table, and so Madam City Clerk, if you could please conduct a roll call vote on this motion.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Wei?
Aye.
Councilmember Willie?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Chow?
Aye.
Mayor Paul?
Yes.
The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much, Madam City Clerk, item number fifteen, under second reading of ordinances, is to consider the second reading of municipal code amendment to establish a streamlined permitting process to electric vehicle charging stations in order to comply with state laws AB one-two-three-six and AB nine-seven-zero. And so, um, we do have the recommended action, that's to uh conduct the second reading of that ordinance and to enact it. Um, I'm assuming that there is no staff report, is that correct? Okay, uh, so there's no staff report, I see Councilmember Moore, you still have your hand raised, did you want to speak to this? Okay, well, let me go to, you did want to speak to this, okay, so let, let me go to the members of the public first to see if anyone would like to speak on this before we um ask the city clerk to conduct the second reading and entertain a motion uh going once, going twice, I don't see members of the public with any hands raised in Zoom, and Madam City Clerk, uh presumably, given that there's nobody in the council chamber, there's no blue cards, is that correct?
That's correct, Mayor.
Okay, and no one has emailed you, is that also correct?
Correct, Mayor.
Okay, we'll give people a little bit more time if they want to uh go ahead and um, you know, participate in that, but I'll go ahead and entertain a motion at this time. Um, Councilmember Moore, you had your hand raised and you were indicating that you'd like to bring forward a motion on item fifteen, uh, before you do that, let me ask the city clerk to uh conduct the second reading of this ordinance two-two dash two-two-four-four.
This is the second reading and enactment of ordinance number two-two dash two-two-four-four, an ordinance of the Cupertino City Council setting forth procedures for expediting permitting processing for electric vehicle charging stations.
Okay, thank you very much, Madam City Clerk, and so Councilmember Moore, would you like to bring forward a motion?
Okay, um, I move that ordinance number two-two dash two-two-four-four be read by title only, and that the city clerks' reading constitute the second reading thereof, and I move that ordinance number two-two dash two-two-four-four be enacted.
Would anyone like to second Councilmember Moore's omnibus motion for second reading and uh enactment of this ordinance? And I see Councilmember Willie has a hand raised, Councilmember Willie, would you like to second?
Yes, I would like to uh second, uh, going electric, yep, I second.
Okay, excellent, thank you very much, Councilmembers Moore and Willie, I don't see further hands raised at this time, and so let's go back to our city clerk for a roll call vote, Madam City Clerk.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Wei?
Aye.
Councilmember Willie?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Chow?
Aye.
Mayor Paul?
Yes.
The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much, we are on to public hearings, and we have one public hearing item, that's item sixteen, that is a, or at item. That's item 16. That is a, or at least I should say, yes, we do have one public hearing item. That's an application for tentative subdivision map and planning permits for the development of six single-family homes on the parcel located at 20860 McClellan Road. And there are the application numbers listed in our, in our agenda, along with the name of the applicant and, and owner. So APN number 359-20-030. And so, I'll take this to our city manager. If you don't mind, I can go ahead and introduce the presenter directly. And that's listed as Pugh Ghosh of our planning, or I should say, the Community Development Department and Planning Manager. And I also see Ben Fu is available as well. Welcome, Pugh and Ben.
Good evening, City Council. Give me a moment to share my screen. I just want to make sure. I'm moving on. I'm hoping my screen is shared here. Again, the item tonight is for a six-lot subdivision and development of six homes on each of those lots. The location is 20860 McClellan Road. And the item was originally, the project was, a project was proposed in October 2021, which included a rezoning application, including the permits that are being heard by the city council tonight. Upon a review, staff found that a mitigated negative declaration would be appropriate for processing of the environmental review for this project, for that project. And as such, a mitigated negative declaration was prepared. This was presented to the Environmental Review Committee in May of 2022. And the Environmental Review Committee recommended that the MND was the appropriate document for that, that particular project. However, there was a caveat. They did, they did direct additional soil testing prior to any planning commission hearings at that time. However, following that, the applicant invoked their right under the Housing Accountability Act to pursue a, a project that would be general plan compliant. And essentially, that meant that a rezoning application would not be required for that project. And, but as a voluntary measure, he did agree to comply with the mitigation measures that had been identified in the MND. So as I mentioned, it did not need rezoning, this particular project. And the project was now eligible for an infill exemption under the California Environmental Quality Act. This project was then heard by the Planning Commission at its September 13 meeting, and it recommended approval of the project on a 3-2 vote with Commissioners Capil and Wong voting no. Just as background, the site is located in the Jolloman neighborhood. In, it's basically located about, about a few hundred feet southeast of the intersection of McClellan and Stelling. The site is approximately 1.25 acres. There is an existing single-family home on it with a rather large storage shed located behind it that stores cars and boats, et cetera. It is fronted by McClellan Road to the north of the site. There's also a private street known as Cherryland Drive located to the east of it. So the access for each of those six units would be from Cherryland Drive, and we'll go over that in just a minute. The uses on the, that's around the project include single-family residences to the northeast and south of varying zoning districts, ranging from R16 to R110. And to the west, there is a church use that is located. It is the Church of the Nazarene, I believe. Just in terms of project data, again, this is, there's a tentative map. What that would involve is subdividing this single, this lot into six lots. There would be a private street that would be completed, a cul-de-sac that would be completed, which is Cherryland Drive. There would be some on-street parking that would be provided on that private street. And there would also be a dedication along McClellan Road that is required for frontage improvements. In terms of analysis, as I mentioned, because of the Housing Accountability Act, a rezoning is not required for this particular site. And as a result, upon an analysis, we found that the closest zoning district that would accommodate the kind of development that is proposed would be the R17.5, essentially. And so we evaluated the project based on the R17.5 standards, which essentially means that the minimum lot size for each of the lots would have to be 7,500 square feet. In this case, the proposed project has lots that range from 9,615 to approximately 7,526. That's the smallest lot. In terms of lot width, the R17.5 zoning district requires lot widths of no less than 60 feet. In this case, the lot widths range from 69 feet down to 60 feet. The proposed FARs for each of the homes is, is under 45%, which is the maximum that's allowed under R17.5. And the heights for each of the structures is also under 28 feet, which is what the R17.5 zoning district allows. In terms of traffic analysis, this is considered a small project because it generates less than 110 new trips per day, and it does not exceed the city's square footage thresholds for development. And so as a result, there was, it was screened out from VMT analysis. The project complies with all the city's parking regulations. And I'll go over that in just a minute. There are also, thanks to the dedication that is being provided, there are going to be pedestrian bicycle improvements along McClellan Road. At the Planning Commission hearing, there were several public comments that were heard, including traffic impacts, comments about on-street parking. There were some concerns about the ADU setbacks and layout. There was also some support for housing in the area. There were some concerns from the property owners that currently live along Cherryland Drive. They had some concerns about shared ingress egress. There are privacy impacts of a proposed balcony on Lot 6. This was also raised by one of the Cherryland Drive property owners. That particular balcony on Lot 6 is located to the front of that lot. And a fence height for Lot 6, I believe that was one of the property owners to the rear. In terms of site planning, as I mentioned, there would be shared access. At the bottom of your screen is, Plan North is really the west. So Stelling runs to the right of the screen here. And to the south of the screen is Cherryland Drive, the shared access on that private street that I mentioned earlier. So again, those are the six lots that would, that are being proposed. That I just wanted to go over the parking requirements for the project. Each of the homes is providing two in-garage parking spaces and three driveway spaces for a total of five onsite parking spaces. And in addition to that, there are six on-street parking spaces that are being provided. The code requires a total of six spaces per lot, which can be in, in some combination, or in any combination, as long as two are in the garage and two are on the driveway. So with that, they have met the city's municipal code requirements. In terms of privacy protection, they are planting privacy protection trees between each of those lots to provide privacy between the view shed, from the view sheds of the second-story windows and the balconies. These are just the architectural renderings of the buildings that are proposed. It's a modern style with a lot of warm tones and very square edges. This is a newer style that we are seeing more and more being developed in the city, including within established neighborhoods. There's noticing, all the noticing that's required for the project has been completed. There was a site sign that were legal ads and mailed notices. In terms of public comments, we, we continue to receive comments from the neighbors along Cherryland Drive, including common private street obligations, you know, parking impacts, the identified unfinished floor elevation discrepancy, and then, which has been since resolved. And then, there was some concern about the garage locations. They didn't want the garage doors to face the street. The proposed project supports several general plan policies, including the ones that are listed here, including building design, attractive design, the location of the buildings, relationship to the site, lot sizes, including connections. They are providing, they are providing a project that supports several of the city's existing general plan goals and policies. In terms of the Housing Accountability Act, there are rules around that. And so as a result, a project that meets and complies with all of the city's objective standards and goals, essentially, the only way that the city could deny such a project would be if a finding was made that the development would have a specific adverse impact on public health and safety, unless it's disapproved. Or also, unless it's approved, but with lower density, meaning if, if the council approved it instead with six, instead of six units with five units, let's say. Also, that there, another finding that needs to be made is that there is no feasible method to satisfactorily mitigate or avoid the, the specific adverse impact, other than by the disapproval or approval at a lower density. So those are the very specific findings that need to be made in order to disapprove or lower the density of the proposed project. Again, this is just a reminder that, you know, the city cannot require a rezoning because the project is consistent with the objective general plan standards and criteria, criteria. But the only reason that it doesn't, that it might need a rezone is because the current zoning is inconsistent with the city's general plan designation. And I did want to point out that under the city's current general plan designation, this project can be developed with six units. As a result, this project does not require rezoning, and it is consistent with the R17.5 zoning district standards. With that, the Planning Commission did recommend that the city council find the actions exempt from CEQA, approve the tentative map application, and approve the two-story permits and the minor residential permits for the balconies. Thank you. That concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer questions.
Okay. Thank you very much, Pugh. I'll take this to members of the public at this point to provide commentary. And so, let's move to the Zoom function before we bring back to council for follow-up questions and deliberation. Jenny, you're the first person on Zoom. And I'll remind everyone that at the time that Jenny has concluded talking, or three minutes, whichever is longer, please have your hand raised in Zoom to be recognized to speak on this item 16. And then you also have two other options. If you're live here in the council chambers, you can fill out a blue card, or you can email cityclerk@cupidino.org. That's all one word, city clerk, during this time to be recognized for public comment. Okay. So Jenny, you're still the one and only hand raised in Zoom. And so, welcome. You'll have three minutes.
Thank you, Mayor Darcy. Hi, I'm Jennifer Griffin. And I did follow this item as it went through Planning Commission, and I believe ERC. I just had a couple of comments. I, I'm assuming, it sounds like the city has tried very hard to make sure that the ADU issues are not falling exactly at four feet, that they're giving it a little bit more space. I will admit that the public has been deluged with a great number of new ADU laws in the last three to four years. The governor signed at least, I believe, eight new ADU laws two weeks ago, eight weeks ago. You can understand that this is very, very difficult for the public to follow and understand what the current law is. I just had a question. I believe one of the new ADU laws does allow ADUs up to 20 feet high, if I'm not mistaken. It could have been 16, but I think it's 20 feet. Will a project like this, if those become law as of January, would someone be able to ask for a two-story ADU on a project like this come January? I can understand, this project is probably not going to hit the dirt shovel-ready for another, probably four months. But what we're coming into January, I, are we going to see a situation where you could have someone asking for a two-story ADU at the back of properties, four feet from property lines, under the power lines? I, I hope that this project will be ready to go intact in the way that it is now. And we're not going to see ADUs that are going to be as high as the second-story balconies. We don't know. This is, this is virgin territory because the governor chose to sign these laws. I, I think that it's very important that we try to make this project look and have the look and feel of a single-family home residential area, just because this is Cupertino. We, some of us may not agree with these new ADU laws, but therein, these are new homes that are going to be occupied, and we need to make sure they have the look and feel of what is the standard in Cupertino. The other thing is too, we want to make sure that these properties have street trees in the front, like the rest of the homes. And that, the problem is that a lot of these homes are becoming so big that we're at 50% FAR. Other than that, I'm sure that the city will make sure that this project goes through. And do they?
Thank you, Jenny. That's three minutes. And so we will go on. I received a brief note here that the applicant is also here. Is that, is that Carrie Brown, who is the applicant? Or is that somebody else, Madam City Clerk?
Mr. Mayor, if I may, we do have, gosh, Kelly Snyder and Alok Damareddy here, who are the applicants. And I believe they might have a presentation as well.
I see, I see.
And if I may make a side note, Mr. Mayor, I did want to let the council know that there is a desk item related to this project. It was one plan sheet that was provided. As a desk item, it will replace one of the grading plan within the tentative map, within the application packet. I just wanted to point that out.
Okay. The desk item, was that delivered by email, or was that delivered in hard copy?
The clerk would, I believe it, it came through on email for sure.
Yes, Mayor, it was sent to council earlier, before the meeting, and it's also been posted to the website for the public.
Okay, good. So let's go to our other member of the public with a hand raised in Zoom before we go to, let's finish out the, the comments here from the public. I, I apologize. I didn't realize that the applicant had a presentation. But let's, let's go ahead, since we've started the, the public commentary, and, and finish that. So we, we have Carrie Brown. And Madam City Clerk, was there anything, well, again, the council chambers is, is empty. So I'm assuming there are no blue cards. But were there any emails that came in during this time?
Yes, Mayor, we have two links provided from Councilmember Moore.
Okay. So I don't, I don't know whether those will be read into the record, but I guess we can...
To, to, the request was to include the documents in the record on the item tonight. However, I do not believe the request was to show them to the public during the meeting.
Well, I, I, I guess because the, so, so Councilmember Moore, I understand you sent an email to the city clerk during this time. Is that right? So, so are you wanting the links to be read into the record? Or?
I, I would like the, the linked material to be part of the record.
To be part of the record?
Yes. Well, we, I think that, yeah, actually, part of the record. So may I speak to that or let you?
No, I just want to clarify this procedure. Are you asking the city clerk to read up three minutes of those links into the record?
Yeah, yes, actually, that would be great. If you would do that, the title page of, of each one, that would be great. You just, the first, to let, to let the public be aware of what they are. Thank you.
Okay. Well, let me, let me check in with the city attorney on this one. Okay. So, so, so Chris, I've got a council member who has, has emailed the city clerk with regard to a couple of links. And, right, I mean, I know that for oral communications, for instance, a council member is a member of the public and can speak on that. And so, with regard to this mechanism, I think to be consistent, those should be read into the record for up to three minutes. I'm not sure about both emails because they're coming from one person. So what are your thoughts on this?
So, so, comments submitted to the clerk will be part of the record. If, if Councilmember Moore wants to read from the documents, she's welcome to do so when council deliberates.
I suppose that, that would make sense. Okay. Well, would that be an accommodation that's acceptable? I, I think you, you do have the right to, you know, read during deliberation. And so that's, that's a good point. I'm going to go ahead and relegate it to that, Councilmember Moore, since that would be part of the record as well. So Carrie Brown, you are next. You'll have three minutes. Welcome.
Hi, it's actually Carl Brown.
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry. My eyes are going. As part of this whole exercise. So welcome, welcome, Carl. Thank you.
Okay. I will be brief. First of all, thank you to the council members for considering this. Thank you for the Planning Commission, for going through all of the, the applicant's work. I know that there's a lot of material. I will say, I am a resident of Cupertino. I'm currently a renter. Anything that can be done to increase the available housing supply and therefore allow rent- Anything that can be done to increase the available housing supply and therefore, uh, allow renters to, uh, purchase homes um, is, is good for the city overall. Um, in this case, uh, I think it's especially good. The current lot is an ISOR, um, having, living nearby the, uh, proposed site. Um, there's essentially, it was a junkyard. Um, there is a shed on the site which is unattractive. Um, and I'm glad to see that work is being done to increase the housing supply, do so attractively. Um, and, um, uh, so I'm in full support of this, and I, I recognize the change, uh, is, is, is not always easy for people to understand or accept, but, um, for someone like myself, this kind of change to make more housing available is certainly needed. Thank you, and I'll yield the rest of my time back.
Great, thank you very much, Carl. And so let's go back to our, um, our panelists here. There was an indication that a couple of members of, um, the public who are, who are the applicant would like to provide a presentation. And so in your Zoom function, uh, if you could raise your hands, um, and we'll go ahead and, I think the typical amount of time we provide for applicant presentations is five minutes, if I'm not mistaken. Um, and, and so let me go ahead and ask Kelly here. Uh, Kelly, would, would five minutes be sufficient for your presentation?
Yes, it is.
Okay, that sounds good. Welcome.
Thank you very much. Would you like me to share my screen, Mr. Mayor, or?
Yeah, I, I think you're able to do so, um, in this function. So if that, um, works, or if the?
Absolutely, just give me one second here and I'll turn it on.
Okay, um, so Madam City Clerk indicates to me that it's actually ten minutes that you have for the presentation per the flow chart that we have in our agenda. And so thank you very much, Madam City Clerk, and so, um, take it away, Kelly.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, let's see, I think I have to do it like this, and it might be a little bit small, but, okay. Um, first of all, I just want to say thank you. Thank you very much to staff, to PO, to Pew for the, um, uh, the presentation just a moment ago. I won't take more than five minutes, I assure you. It's been a pleasure to work with everybody. Thank you so much. Um, just a few quick items to note for the council to consider before they take a vote tonight, which is we wanted to really accent how thorough we've reviewed the project, um, all through the different environmental and CEQA, um, research. We've done a lot of community outreach. We have a lot of support from the neighborhood, including even people like Carl who call in and are really pleased to see us cleaning up the site. Um, this does have a lot of benefits for the city of Cupertino and for the neighborhood, um, in addition to cleaning up an ISOR. Um, and we did get a positive vote from Planning Commission. Um, as a reminder, as, as Ms. Gosh said, we began this back in February of twenty twenty-one. We've been at this for almost a year and a half now. Um, so it's been a very thorough process. A reminder also that every single, um, every single third-party consultant and best practices expert that you see on the screen right now was someone who represented the city's point of view and the public's point of view in that. We have our own list of six or seven consultants and engineers and, and, you know, bio resource experts too. These are the ones that represented, um, the, the recommendation for approval on the city's behalf. Um, we've done a great deal of community outreach. We've had a number of private meetings. We've met with most of the direct adjacent property owners, one-on-one, more than once. Um, we've had a very good relationship with our church neighbors on the side. Um, we are still trying to, um, trying to respond as quickly as we can to ongoing comments that occasionally come from our neighbors on Cherryland. Um, we've definitely doing our best to, um, to accommodate their requests. There are a few things that you may hear about later that, uh, that we're simply complying with the law and complying with the city's obligations. And so we, we think we've gotten the best possible project we ha, we can, while still complying with all of the necessary conditions of approval that your Public Works and your Streets and Traffic have asked us to comply with. Um, we've had a number of public meetings. I won't, um, ask you, I won't go over them all again. We do have our own website, and we know through analytics that we've had a lot of people visiting. So we think the information has been abundant and has been thoroughly reviewed and vetted. Um, one way to, to demonstrate this is that we don't need any exceptions or variances. We're not asking for anything unusual. This, as your staff report says, complies in every possible way. So that's one of the ways we know, uh, that we've done a pretty good job of listening to everybody because there's kind of, um, not much left to look into. Um, of course, we're going to be paying all of our city obligation fees. We'll be contributing to the Park in Lou, the school impact fees, all of our plan check fees, and contributing to your below-market rate housing program. Um, we have responded, as I said, to all of our, all of the concerns and questions that we've received on a day-by-day basis, and there's just, uh, a couple of new ones, um, that we can't do anymore regarding our site plan, regarding the, um, grade and some issues related to the, to the grade. Um, and with that, I just want to say thank you that, um, I'm here to answer a few questions. Mr. Damareddy is also on the line to answer questions. We really appreciate you considering this tonight. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much, and, um, I appreciate you staying within the stated time limit that you self-imposed as well. So let's take this back to council, and I will go by a show of hands with regard to follow-up questions, uh, from council of either staff or the applicant. Um, and I see Councilmember Willie has a hand raised. Councilmember Willie, followed by Councilmember Moore.
Yeah, so, uh, very good presentation from both the applicant and the, uh, and Pew. And it's always good to see some renderings, kind of be able to, uh, try and visualize what we're talking about. So the few questions that I have, if, uh, you can go back to the view, the plan view that showed the parking, and it was stated that there's two parking in the garage, three parking out front for each, and six on street. And when I was looking at that, uh, rendering, it, unless it's not really showing things the way they are. Yeah, perfect. So, you know, I see the three arrows in front of three triangles in front of each of the residences, and if that's the three parking spaces, if, when I look at the street and it shows that there are six, uh, parking spaces on the street, if that's the size of a vehicle, okay, roughly, and then you put those in the spot in front of each of the, uh, unit, gray, but then I don't see how, um, the third spot gets access because it sure looks like there's trees in front of all three, all of the third spot.
I, I can try to help answer that. Uh, the driveway is flared, sir, so it doesn't necessarily, uh, you, you can have a two-car curb cut, but a three-car driveway, and that is what is proposed in this case.
So if the two primary spots are occupied, does that block the third car from getting in and out?
Uh, potentially, yes.
Okay.
But that is something that the homeowner will have to manage.
Right. And if you look at the ones that are parked on this street, again, using that, those gray boxes to kind of represent the size of vehicles, for the, for the, uh, four houses that are, uh, adjacent to the street parking, uh, at least lot two, three, and possibly four, it sure looks like it's going to be tough to get both of those, uh, primary spot cars in there because you're kind of hitting the, uh, cars that are parked on the street.
So I will say none of this is to scale. At least those draw boxes were drawn in by me. So I was just trying to indicate where those parking spaces were, not necessarily, uh, drawing the spaces to scale.
Great. As long as, as long as we just acknowledge that, you know, double-check that, make sure, I'm sure the applicant wants to make sure that they don't wind up with, oh, my gosh, what did we do? But, you know, it just seemed too obvious.
The sizes check out for the municipal code.
So then, uh, the next question is, you know, is that, uh, Cherryland already a private road for the existing other properties?
Yes, it is. Cherryland Drive, ultimately, after this is built out, would provide access to nine homes.
Well, but what I'm getting at, though, is that the owner of this property, the applicant, the owner of this property, um, uh, has its street frontage, and I'm just looking at it from, uh, the standpoint that the other property owner had, I think, dedicated that Cherryland for access to his properties. Now this property owner that is abutting that, uh, private road is now going to take advantage of that private road. Is, is that a problem?
Not from our perspective. It's actually a good problem from our perspective because that means there are fewer driveway curb cuts onto McClellan. So there's fewer, uh, impacts on the public street.
But how about those other people? I mean, we have the same thing over off of Rodriguez where, you know, property that belongs to, uh, one entity is kind of being used by another entity. And so if that, if that Cherryland Road actually came out of the adjacent property's property, and then this property is going to use it, again, this looks like a great project, but I want to be sure that, uh, everybody is kept whole.
Yes. So when that Cherryland development was developed, there was an ingress egress easement already established on that to provide ingress egress to this particular property that is developing now. So they went into that process knowing that they would be providing reciprocal ingress eas, egress to the property to the west.
Great. Okay, yeah, I, you know, I just want to be sure I asked that. Next question is, I thought I heard you say something about they didn't want garage doors facing the street, but it, from the, the driveway parking, it sure looks like all the garage doors face the street.
Yes, then the neighbor across the street, the neighbors across the street did not want the garage doors to face that way. However, that is the case in ninety-nine percent of single-family homes in Cupertino.
Yeah, well, right, right. And so you're saying that's the case here. So that's one of the things then that wasn't able to be mitigated.
Well, it, it would be really hard to accommodate that because you would, if the garage is at a, um, if it's a side-loading entrance, you do need a lot of backup space to actually get out of that garage. And so it would not have been, uh, very feasible with the design, then you won't have the living space close to the streets. There's other general plan stuff that kind of mess, gets messed up.
Yeah. So it truly sounds reasonable, you know, it's just I want to be sure that I understood what was going on there. The last and final question is, you know, the planning, uh, commission had a three to two to approve. Can you tell me what the hesitation was for the two that, uh, did not, uh, vote to approve? I just want to be sure that if there was something that we just need to be aware of and look at, maybe it was the, uh, the, uh, garage doors facing the street, or, or maybe it was the upstairs balcony on the lot number six. I mean, what were the, what were the hesitations from two of the planning commissioners? Because those are our eyes.
Right, I think, um, one of the commissioners, I, I think maybe both the commissioners were, um, um, wanted additional, uh, soil testing. Um, and they, uh, they were a little disappointed that the project went the route, uh, that it went, went through, basically.
Okay, so it wasn't something like the, the, uh, the impact of the four, you know, the upstairs porch overlooking the neighbor, uh, privacy protection, using the same access road. Those are the things that, you know, I, I just want to be sure I don't miss something there that we had a, uh, a duty to be aware of.
There, there were no privacy concerns that were, um, necessarily identified at the hearing.
Well, thank you very much. Uh, I think it's going to be a good project. I think both the, uh, your PowerPoint and the applicants have done a really good job. The architecture looks really good too. I, I, you know, though, that is a very common, uh, architecture going forward, very modernistic. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Willie. Next we have Councilmember Moore.
All right, um, thank you, and, and maybe these are, are questions for the attorney. When I, so the, the documents which I submitted are the, um, the initial study, the, which came to the Environmental Review Committee, the ISMND, and the, uh, mitigation monitoring reporting, um, documents. And, um, to my recollection, these did not go to the, the, the Planning Commission. So they did not have them for review. So I'd like to hear and understand why they didn't. Um, so in the initial study, the appendices had, um, appendixes, appendices, A through E, um, and they included the geotechnical investigation and the phase one and limited phase two environmental site assessment. But in the reports which we have, um, and this is for the categorical exemption memorandum, we only have three appendices, the arborist reports, the air quality and greenhouse gas modeling results, and the preliminary stormwater analysis, and the geotechnical investigation and phase one and limited phase two environmental site assessments are removed. So we, we don't have those to, to look at. Okay, so, um, they did do the appendix, uh, G checklist, um, for the CEQA checklist, and, um, the, there was, there, there needed to be mitigation, so there, the contamination would be less than significant, um, with, uh, with mitigation. So I guess I'm concerned that the, that this, that this, um, body is, has not been given the soils reports to, to know about, um, the contamination and why more soil testing had been requested. I also would like there to be a check on the, um, the staff report about the, um, the recommendations from the ERC, because, uh, we, two of us, um, I serve on the ERC, two of us had requested that there would be more soil testing, and, um, to my recollection, there were, were three who did not recommend and recommended just simply that the MND was the appropriate document. So I'd, I'd like to know, uh, what, I'd like to have the record checked on that. Um, so, because the staff report is saying that, uh, it was recommended to the Planning Commission that there would be, uh, more soil testing. And, and that concern is, um, how we get to having, um, the, the, the CEQA bypass here with this categorical exemption with this, the soil question out there, and do we have enough, um, information, um, here for, for this approval? Um, so I, I, I'd like to understand all that. Um, this, this has nothing to do with the project. It's got to, it's to understand this process of, of the CEQA exemption when there's, um, when we, you had a request for more soil testing, it wasn't, it was, didn't happen. Um, and, and, and this, like I said, this body, um, hasn't been given the reports, um, to know about. Uh, and, and that is troubling to me. Um, so I would like to understand why the reports weren't included, um, for, for all of us. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Councilmember Moore. It sounded like a set of comments and questions directed to our city attorney, so Chris?
Yeah, I'll, I'll attempt to answer them. So as, you know, as Pew pointed out in her presentation, the applicant did initially come forward, uh, and, and had elected to go through, um, prepare an initial study to comply with CEQA. Um, after, uh, the ERC hearing, uh, the, the applicant reevaluated the project and, um, and, you know, uh, recognized that under the Housing Accountability Act, um, there was not a need for a rezoning, which is, would both, you know, eliminate that discretionary approval and open up the possibility of pursuing an, pursuing an infill exemption. Uh, and, and so, you know, the requirements for documenting that infill exemption are different than the requirements for documenting the ISMND. Um, you know, as you pointed out, there are some, um, impacts you have to look at, traffic noise, air quality and water quality. Uh, and those were evaluated in the infill exemption memorandum that was provided to the Planning Commission and, 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 uh, and, you know, has also been provided to council. Um, there, um, there are other impacts that aren't evaluated for sites that qualify for the infill exemption memorandum, and, and particularly with respect to, um, you know, hazardous materials. and and particularly with respect to um you know hazardous materials, this site qualifies because it is not a site that is listed as a Cortez list, so-called Cortez list site under the Health and Safety Code. So um so the 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 infill um exemption memorandum was provided because it, you know, it's staff's uh recommendation and and the planning commission's conclusion uh that it, you know, it fully documents the requirements to to qualify for the exemption. Um you know, and supports, you know, that decision by with substantial evidence. With respect to some of the um the technical reports that um were not provided, uh you know, to the extent that you know, they're even relevant, given the different standards, it's 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 not um necessarily common practice to provide all of those technical reports to a a a um a governing body or an advisory body like the planning commission in the course of making this decision. Um you know, there is an expectation um that you have the ability to rely on on um on your staff, on consultants, um to 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 do that analysis. Um all of those documents, um you know, are in the record for this case, um you know, and and you know, they certainly you know, that that whole history is part of the record. Uh but you know, that was the decision that um that staff made in presenting the information to both the planning commission and council. And you know, as I think Councilmember Moore is, you're very well aware, there's a balance between providing all the information and having a very long um agenda packet, you know. So we're 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 trying to to do our best to balance those interests. So um if there's any part of your question that I didn't respond to, I'm happy to take follow-up.
Well, I think fairly simply, and I think the for the neighbors who live around that site, is the site clear for residential? And is there contamination that needs to be cleaned up? And how will they know about that?
So so I would point out, um you know, there the setting aside the fact that the applicant chose not to go down the IS MND process, the conditions of approval that were incorporated into the IS MND the, excuse me, the mitigation measures that were incorporated into the IS MND will be conditions of approval for that that project. And so that will require uh an appropriate level of oversight from the County Department of Environmental Health, you know, and that that will be determined based on the the environmental environmental health review of the site.
Through the mayor, so the the uh project applicant is required by what aspect of this approval to apply for regulatory oversight for cleanup? Um because I want to know how the neighbors will will know the um since it's not in these, in in our um agenda packet, how will they know the extent of contamination? And whether or not, if if they want to read the reports um from the county, how how is that going to work out?
So the so so the conditions of approval require um a voluntary oversight from the county for the and to address, you know, any environmental issues at the on this site. I I think the degree of public process at the county would depend on sort of decisions that the county county environmental health makes. And I don't um I I don't have full knowledge of what that public process um would look like or what those regulations are. There is um transparency through any site that's 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 um accepted into the 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 voluntary oversight program because of, you know, their documents are available online through through GeoTracker. So there's there that that provides a fair bit of transparency for um soils and other reports that you know, that um are prepared for proper properties that participate in that program. I I do not know um what the details of the formal public participation requirement would be.
Through the mayor, um where could you point to these conditions of approval? So I I'll feel more comfortable if I can can see that that's, just point to the page where it says that it's going to go to Santa Clara County DEH.
I'm getting there. Pugh could probably get there faster than I.
I I have it up. I can share my screen.
Okay, that's that's what I'm looking for because I I I want to make sure that the the neighbors have access to these documents, they know that somebody's looking at it because we haven't spoken about the contamination on the site. And and we have seen a similar process happen before. So I also want to make sure that we have disclosure on our website and and some and a link so that people know how to get there because this, we've we've had this happen before, like I said. I want to make sure that the the neighbors know how to get to get to GeoTracker and know how to look up documents if they're concerned. I don't want them to lose sleep at night. That there that there is no regulator, that they're not trying to self-regulate. So I think those kinds of things are important. And there we go.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Of course, and through the mayor, if I may, um the Cherryland Development also went through some soil cleanup themselves, those three lots that were developed up to the east of the site, they had to have some significant, actually more soil cleanup than this particular case, I believe. So it and that happened through the county, Santa Clara County Department of Environmental Health as well.
Uh sorry, sorry, Pugh, when you were sharing, where were you in the packet?
I I can I can state that. That is in the draft resolution for the tentative map, and it is on page seven of the seventeen-page PDF, which is attachment A, I believe. It is uh conditions number thirteen and fourteen.
Got it. Okay, great. Um well, thank you very much. And I see Councilmember Moore is still
One more.
indicating.
Thank you, Mayor. So are are these um standard conditions? Or is this, because I I understand that when we get into these exemptions that it we're outside of the SEQA process and it gets, it it feels pretty ambiguous. And as we saw before with with another project, that it I'm glad that you have these conditions of approval, but we didn't have them um previously for another large project in the in the city. So anyway, if you could explain how that process worked. Or did we just get lucky that you put that condition in? Or do we have something that automatically says it? Because I know we made some modifications to the municipal code regarding environmental cleanup.
I can go over that just briefly. Um with regard to the particularly large project that you were referring to, we did we did not have adopted standards at the time that would require us to, or objective standards that would have ensured that we could have required that to happen. In this particular case, this project actually did precede our adoption of those standards that are now in place. However, the applicant voluntarily agreed to adhere to the mitigation measures that were identified in the IS MND. So the language that you see in the resolution is actually from the mitigation measures from the IS MND. So if you compared uh those two documents, you'll find language that's very similar. Um now, moving forward, though, we do have an ordinance which applies automatically to every project that walks in the door for conditions of approval related to soil cleanup and such. So we do have that in place.
Thank you. And thank you so much for the changes that were put into the municipal code recently. And I and I it's really helpful. And I think moving forward, it'll put a lot of people to ease. Thank you.
Great, thanks very much. Um okay, I don't see any other hands raised. Let me let me follow up on a quick question on this. So I did pull this, this is super enumerated fourteen eighty-six of our agenda packet. And I'm reading the last sentence in um number thirteen under hazards and hazardous materials, phase two recommendations. Uh it reads that the applicant has complied with the recommendations, shall be verified by the City of Cupertino Community Development Department and the Santa Clara County Environmental Health Department through their voluntary cleanup program prior to the issue and so the first grading and or building permit. So um could someone tell me a little bit about the voluntary cleanup program of DEH? Uh because once you accede to it, then you're under the jurisdiction of DEH, is that correct? Because I I just, I don't want there to be confusion uh out in the public with regard to what is entailed by the voluntary nature of that of that title.
Right, yeah. So DEH doesn't actually like calling it the voluntary cleanup program because it doesn't, it doesn't see the program as as, once you commit to it, it does not see the program as voluntary. It's agreeing to, it's 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 an agreement to enter into DEH oversight. Um and then once that agreement is executed, um you know, DEH will review the site and will a a prove um any necessary remediation and a site management uh plan to to deal with contamination that might be identified during development. So um so it it is voluntary in the sense that the the applicant chooses to enter it, but once the applicant enters it, it imposes um binding obligations on on the applicant.
Right. And so the language here definitively states that the applicant is acceding to this program. And so the voluntary nature of this uh is not such that it reaches to a future point after this agreement is entered, such that the applicant can then say, this is voluntary, I don't have to participate in this. Is that correct?
I can also add on, Mayor Paul, that is correct. And also the fact that the language is codified, well, not codified, included in the conditions of approval that requires the applicant to go through this process um as part of the project.
Okay, yeah, thank you very much. I wanted to provide that that comfort and a a reading. Because a lot of times you, you know, see these types of uh language provisions and it's not immediately clear clear to layperson. And you you don't want to turn it into a situation where people are making, you know, um inappropriate or just clear outright wrong, you know, interpretations of the language. So uh greatly appreciate that. And let me go to Councilmember Wei and um followed by Vice Mayor Chow on our hands. So Councilmember Wei, you're next.
Okay, um thank you, Mayor Paul. So I have two questions. Um the question is, one is from the owner, Home Association of Cherrywood. I read their, um you know, what they sent to us, and I went to see the property. And I actually talked with her, she's in Europe, but I did get in touch with her through line. And um so apparently the owner, Home Association is talking about the little property that they have on this, that two point, a very narrow property that they have to give in order for that property to put the lands together. So what she's concerning is because land worth a lot of money and she's trying to get the owner to either donate some money to CUSD or something. So I don't know what's going on, but I wonder, the city probably should not be, maybe this is the attorney's question, we should not be in between the two owners. Um that's probably not we, what we should do. It it that's my first question.
Oh, okay, Councilmember Wei, um let me refer this to our city attorney. Um let's.
So um so I I so I I can, I I will defer to planning or or public work staff on sort of, you know, the the process the city used to to evaluate um the um the the improvements along um either the private or the public right of way. I will respond to um Councilmember Wei's question about CUSD is, you know, there would there would have to be some nexus between, you know, impacts on school and um the property, you know, the 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 um the property we would be taking from this particular property owner. And if there's not any 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 it any impact on school that we'd be remedying remedying by taking this property, that that wouldn't be a lawful use of the the city's police power.
Uh yeah, that's good. So um maybe you could answer the question about what, you know, she's very concerned, she's giving property for free. I think that's what her concern is.
So um yes, Councilmember Wei, when when the project was originally developed, they did agree to provide reciprocal ingress egress access to the property to the west in order to facilitate such development. Now, in terms of their um, you know, own private arrangements on who pays what, you know, we don't get involved in that matter necessarily. Um and so that is a civil matter that they need to work out between themselves. In terms of the design of the uh the street and the improvements that are along McClellan, I can say that it has been reviewed by Public Works. They do meet the standards of the city. Um you know, there are some flexible standards when they are private streets. Uh there was a certain kind of um orientation or not orientation, but layout that that the property owner on the east had proposed for the property on the west. But ultimately, that was not how the the property on the west proposed it, and it is acceptable to the city for how it is being proposed right now. So there there is no, there are no concerns from Public Works in terms of the development as proposed.
Okay, so as far as I can understand, it's between the two property owners to resolve, um whatever they feel that they need to resolve.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Uh my second question is, and I also did meet the property owner uh yesterday morning at the property, because I want to understand what's the issue and what, you know, where is there, where's where. So when I were, we were checking, I did ask him, why are you not in our housing element? Uh I think um he sort of has this, I don't know if he's in line, he has this intention that he's willing to be in the housing element, but at the same time, he wants this project to go through. So he has choices. What what, I so I told him, I I, as far as I understand, if you're in a housing element, um you know, we we set a minimum uh density, and you have to meet that minimum density. So can you maybe inform him or inform us, what is an owner's choice? He's in this process, but he also maybe are interested in being in the housing element. What would he, his correct course should be?
So um you know, when we kind of evaluated the situation, we talked to our housing, our consultant. Um basically, the point was that you can't be a pipeline project and a housing element site at the same time. So you got to choose whether you're going to be one or the other. And um so that that was, and and the property owner was very um gung ho about moving forward with this particular project. And he wanted to get the hearings as soon as possible, so which is where we are right now. Uh once this project gets approved, uh if the council were to increase the density on the site, this project would become a legal non-conforming project if the property owner then chooses to go through with this project rather than develop at a minimum density of you know, whatever the council picks. So um that that would create some sort of an inconsistency within um the city's general plan, essentially. So and and the property owner would have that option for two years. You know, the city might rely on that site as at a certain higher density potentially for a higher yield. But then if the property owner chose this path forward, because this this tentative map approval will be good for two years or you know, and then any number of years if the state chooses to extend that deadline, then um you know, he has a long-term uh period of time where he gets to pick which option he goes for.
Uh let me, let me call on our uh city attorney. And I do note that a couple of hands were raised from the applicant. Uh so we'll go there after after Chris. So Chris, did you want to speak to any of the commentary that's been raised?
I I would just only note that that under H HCD's guidance uh for the housing element, it's, you know, it's it's consistent with that guidance to treat a a a project that's been, you know, proposed or entitled as uh developed at the density that's proposed or entitled as, you know, as opposed to, you know, a hypothetical zone density. And I believe that's what the city has done for this project, this property in in the housing element. So um certainly, I think the treatment is consistent with with HCD guidance.
Okay. And then with regard to the the choosing between a pipeline project and a housing element project, can you elaborate a bit on that? Because the pipeline units can still count towards the number of units, can't they?
They they, yes, they will count towards the number of units. And and I think what I was saying is is that it 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 is at least more consistent, if not mandated, by HCD guidance to to treat the project as um as it's proposed and, you know, depending on what happens today, entitled as opposed to some hypothetical future project at a different density.
Right, right. And and that's really what I meant when I talked about blatant misrepresentations of legal requirements. I mean, pipeline units count. I I spoke to an HCD rep, policy representative in this very room about a week and a half ago. And she confirmed that pipeline units do indeed count. It's a matter of making sure that you're following on with the with the owner. So um I I just wanted to make sure that we clear up that, you know, what's been a a clear misconception and misconstruction of legal requirements.
Yeah, I yeah. I mean, the pipeline units do count and there, I mean, there there's more certainty with respect to pipeline units than with respect to other units. Um just because, you know, you have them, they're being, they're planned or entitled or at some phase in the permitting process. So um so of course, there's a higher level of certainty that those units will actually be delivered.
Right. That's not just a owner letter of interest. It's actually a full application. They're going through a process, et cetera, et cetera. So. Okay, uh great. Well, um I do see that the hands from our applicants are now no longer raised. Let me just uh give a quick opportunity for either a Loc or Kelly. Did you want to make a comment? Because I know that you guys had been referenced. Um and so I don't see your hands raised back up. And so let me go on, I I I see that. I see that, well, Alok, your camera's now on, did you want to make a comment at this point?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think a quick comment is, if there was a possibility of including a range of density for this, that includes the housing element, so that would be between five and 20, I would be supportive, because that would give me option to redo that if we choose to in the future. So, that's what I stated. The Councilmember Wei, when I met her, was, the option would be to zone it at five to 20 as recommended by the joint commission back in July or September.
Okay, very good, thanks very much. So, let's go to, I believe it was Vice Mayor Chow that had the next comment, and council, I forget who we had on the floor, was it Councilmember Wei? Did you have the last comment? And you're okay with us moving? Okay, so let's go on to Vice Mayor Chow at this point. Vice Mayor.
Yeah, thank you for the presentation, and thank you, the applicant, for addressing the neighbors' concerns. It seems you have tried, made a very good effort to do that. I just want to ask for some clarification. I think there were some concerns mentioned by public comments in Planning Commission about privacy impacts of proposed balcony, especially on Lot 6. We know that balcony usually is of concern for our residents, so I wonder if anything has been done to address that concern, or maybe privacy screening to address those concerns. Another thing is about fence height for Lot 6. I don't know what exactly is a concern, and whether anything has been done to address that concern.
I can help answer that. The balcony on Lot 6, and I have to apologize, my computer is acting up and is not wanting to pull the plans up right now, but I can look to see on the presentation if I can share my screen in just a second.
Go ahead.
So, the balcony on Lot 6 is located on the front of the property, so it is located somewhere along this particular area, and the property owner that is concerned about it is located kind of southeast of that. So, there is, it is a long way off. We do not have any privacy requirements for properties, balconies that face the front yard necessarily, and there is also not much room for planting along this particular area to, you know, accommodate a concern that's approximately, I would say, between 150 and, you know, 120 feet away. So, it is a fairly far distance for, to be able to see and to be impacted from those views. With regard to the fence, I believe that the property owner to the west, well, to the left of this plan right now, was concerned that the fence that is proposed wasn't tall enough, but the way that fences are measured in our city is that it's actually measured from the property that's higher, and so, the fence is actually taller for the person that's behind the property, so there's actually more privacy for him.
Okay, great, thank you. And then regarding cherry land, cherry land is a private street, so are, so are they going to have an agreement to, from the cherry land HOA to allow this new property to use cherry land for egress?
So, there is a condition of approval when the cherry land development was approved to, to allow the ingress egress on Cherryland Drive for this particular property on the west. So, there is a requirement that they have to see through. With regard to the actual negotiation and whatever else that needs to occur, that needs to happen between this particular applicant and Cherryland Drive, and that's what they're figuring out right now.
Okay.
And they need to have that sorted out before we issue permit.
So, I'm curious on how come the city is, was, has such a foresight to require egress on cherry land at the time of approval?
So, this is what, when planning, we sort of look ahead, and we wanted to make sure that there weren't multiple driveways that with multiple, you know, exits onto McClellan, which was going to have, you know, at that time, a Class 4 bike lane, there were things that were planned for it, and so, we wanted to make sure that the points of conflict were minimized, and we understood that both of these properties were going to develop.
Okay, so, the cherry land HOA couldn't put up a fence along their property line that would not be, that would violate their condition of approval for their own property? Yeah, thank you.
Great, thanks for the questions, and we have, Councilmember Wei, your hand's still raised, did you want to have a follow-up? Go ahead.
Yes, that would be great. Sorry, so I want to just also clarify two points that Vice Mayor, who's following with the cherry line, cherry, cherry land homeowners association. So, if I understand correctly, they need to have an agreement before the permit, our city can give permits?
Yeah, so we need to look at a maintenance agreement and, you know, have recorded ingress egress documents from both parties.
What if they cannot reach an agreement?
Well, it is a condition of approval, so they're, they're working their way through it.
Okay, and the city, will we give them advice, or just let them work it out?
I think we'll let them work it out.
Okay, can we provide some customary or examples, or what's to be done, or something?
In terms of language, yes, we can certainly help with what we've had in other developments. We've done that in the past, but, you know, in this case, I think that the holdup is not necessarily the language as much as other considerations.
Understand. Okay, my second question is, I just heard, I think, Alok talk about, he would like to have this project to be a five to 20 units, like, agreement or something from the city, but he's doing the six units right now. If in case he changes mind, he wants to do a higher density, will he be allowed to do that?
No, not under the current general plan designation that he has. He can only build up to five dwelling units to the acre, which yields six units on this property. He is proposing 12 units on the property, including the ADUs. Also, I believe the Planning Commission's recommendation at that time was potentially a minimum of 20 dwelling units per acre, not the minimum of five, so that this project would then become a legal non-conforming project.
Okay, so, so his request would not be able to go through, and I mean, when I talked to him, I think he's, he's, he loved this project, would like to go on, but in case, in the future, he might want to develop a different project, he would have to go through the whole, all general plan amendment, things like that?
Yes.
Okay, and so, I want to follow with one more question. What if he said, I want, I'm just, please, he wants to be in the housing element, doesn't want to do this anymore, does he have an option to do that?
He can, he can certainly abandon that, and if he wishes to be a housing element site, then, you know, at this point, of course, the council has already acted on the site, so it would be, you know, not necessarily the draft housing element at this point, but, you know, it's something to consider, for sure.
Okay, so I think he's listening, so if he had questions, I think he can ask you, or, you know, he can ask you to get.
And we've talked multiple times.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Wei, and I'll go back to Vice Mayor Chow and then Councilmember Moore, but before we do that, is there an appetite to place a motion on the table for further consideration?
Sure.
And so, I see, okay, Councilmember, Vice Mayor Chow, you said sure, so, did you want to put that recommended action on the table?
Yeah, I'll make the motion to approve the staff recommendation that we find the project qualifies for CEQA exemption, adopt resolution number 22-129, approving the tentative map to subdivide the subject parcel into six lots. Adopt resolution number 22-130, approving the two-story permits. Number is listed in the, in the agenda, and adopt resolution number 22-131, approving the minor residential permits.
Okay, and Councilmember Moore, did you want to second that for further discussion at this time?
Certainly, second.
Okay, thank you, and so, we'll go in that order for the follow-on comments. Vice Mayor Chow, you're first, then Councilmember Moore.
I think a common question people usually have is where the garbage cans are going to be, so.
Actually, if I may, through the mayor, there's actually a great exhibit in the plans that show where the garbage cans are located, they're actually located outside the garage, in different places, but they are on site, and there is a plan that shows how they're going to be pulled out.
Okay.
So, not along the McClellan Road?
It will have to be along McClellan Road, because the recollection cannot go on the pavers that are on Cherryland Drive.
Okay, and then final question is, actually, this table on, in the staff report, thank you for this really great comparison table of the existing zoning and versus the proposed. So, we know that there's no rezoning necessary, however, we do know that zoning will be changed from R110 to R1-7.5, although that's consistent with the general plan, but doesn't that mean we do need to change the zoning of this site?
I will let the city attorney take that particular one, but there is no action that the council is taking related to that at this time.
Yeah, so there is no, no action to, needed to change the zoning at this time. The relevance of R1.75 standards is, under the Housing Accountability Act, when a project is consistent with general plan densities but not consistent with zoning, HCD guidance instructs cities to look towards other, other standards in their zoning ordinance that are, that are appropriate for the level of density that's allowed in the general plan. Here, we do have, you know, a standards for R1, R1.7, 1-7.5 density in our zoning ordinance, and that would, that allows the density that is permissible under the general plan, and so, planning staff applied those development standards to this project, but a rezoning's not required to apply those standards.
So, but the project still doesn't comply with the existing zoning, so that means in the future, we probably need to do a cleanup of the zoning map to match the actual zoning to, just to, to match the, to make that 1, 1-7.5.
Right, we're not required to do that, but that would eliminate a non-conforming use, that's correct.
Yeah, so maybe that's something we would do in the future, when we redo the zoning map.
Yeah, yeah, no, it would, it would bring the zoning in conformance with the planned future and maybe eventually existing use, so it's not a bad idea, it is not a requirement at this time at least.
Yeah, I remember the city has done that before, that they would do multiple rezoning to match existing use. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, makes good administrative sense. So, let's go and call on Councilmember Moore, did you have your hand raised for any further comment or deliberation?
So, I was wondering if, if we could look at a floor plan real quick, perhaps, for Lot 6. I just wanted to see how the, the ADU, where the entrance is for that.
Okay, floor plan for Lot 6, if anyone can bring that up.
Right, so how do you get into the ADU?
My Adobe just crashed, I'm going to try to bring the plans up again, if you'll just give me a minute.
Okay, I can also ask another question, which was, I did see the, the new grading plan, and there were some changes to the bio-retention basins, and if, I know it was mentioned that it was in the desk items, I was just curious what, why they needed to be changed.
As I'm multitasking, apologies for this technical glitch, but the grading plan was updated, there's actually a few clouds on the grading plan that indicate what was changed on the plans. My understanding is that the finished floor that is indicated for the lot on the east side, for the lots that were on the original cherry land development, were updated, and that is the only change, there were no changes necessarily to the grades, I believe, so it doesn't make a difference to the actual proposed project. It's just a correction.
Okay, and then, I do see there's a plan on there, if someone could perhaps use their cursor, point to the ADU, and where the entrance is to get into it.
I have it up right here, and which lot, ma'am?
Uh.
Oh, you have it up, okay, perfect. So, this is something that, a couple of things about the ADUs, the ADUs are not up for consideration tonight, only because that's a ministerial review, that, that, they could, they could come in without showing those ADUs and have those be approved as building permits. However, with that said, my understanding is that there does need to be a hinged door to these ADUs, and these are not necessarily fully developed at this point, so that needs to be reviewed by the building department, and they will make their comments, and if there are any changes that need to be made in order to accommodate those building code requirements, those will have to be made to the ADU. However, as shown on these plans right now, the, the ADU is currently only accessed by sliding glass doors, that is, to the south of this shaded box that's shown on here.
Okay, so I see that door, but what it's attached?
That's a closet, that's not the main entrance, where your cursor is, ma'am.
Okay, I'm not sure who did that, but I see the, I see the sliding glass door to the south, and it's going, attaching to a large rectangular room, which appears to have a folding, some kind of a folding wall.
That wall is, so there is a kitchen to the left, and then presumably, it's a, it's a family living room, and then there is a bathroom to, on the back, along the back. My understanding is that the, directly across from the sliding glass doors is a laundry facility, and then the bedroom, a door to the bedroom, so that's like a foyer right there, the interior court.
So, the ADU is kind of like a one-bedroom?
Correct.
Unit, okay, all right, thank you.
Yes.
Great, thanks very much. So, that doesn't continue with further hands, and so, Councilmember Moore, your hand is still up, did you want to follow up at this time? If not, we do have a motion on the table for the recommended action, and a second from Vice Mayor Chow and Councilmember Moore respectively, and so, I'll do a going once and going twice, and so, let's go ahead and have our city clerk conduct a roll call vote on this motion.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Wei?
Aye.
Councilmember Willie?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Chow?
Aye.
Mayor Paul?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much, Madam City Clerk, and as we had indicated previously, item 17, I don't believe council adopted consent items nine through 13, I think we did, actually. Okay, we adopted consent calendar, right, nine through 13 and 17? I think that was in the motion. Yeah, that was in the motion, yeah, okay, no worries, thank you for, for bringing that up, though. So, item number 17 was part of our consent calendar, and we are on back to oral communications as continued. I don't see our member of the public that was here earlier indicating that she had wanted to speak on the city manager report, and so, I'll go on to our last category of item prior to adjournment, and that is the council and staff comments and future agenda items. Let's go to staff first, and Pamela, is there anything? No, okay, great, and so, staff comments are concluded, now we have council comments or future agenda items. Let's go in order, we'll have one bite at the apple each, just to, you know, kind of clarify that ex ante. So, Councilmember Moore, you'll go first, followed by Councilmember Willie, and Councilmember Moore.
Okay, so I know that this is, that time of year again where there are signs out, so I would like to have the sign ordinance revisited and brought back so that everyone's on the same page with regards to that. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Moore. Councilmember Willie?
Yeah, so, you know, we've got quite a few residents lately, you know, concerned about the 5G. you know, concerned about the five G. A year ago April, I had asked for a, uh, updated study session. Do we have a date for that, and then I have a couple of comments?
Uh, sure, let's, um, why don't, why don't we, uh, go to our city manager very briefly? My understanding is that we're looking at December sixth, but?
That is, that is correct, Mayor Paul.
Okay, uh, go ahead, Councilmember Willie.
Yeah, so, so that's it. Now, a year and a half ago in April, when I requested it that night, um, you know, a resident had talked about, uh, other cities and what their ordinances were, and that night you had said, oh, okay, John, you're going to consolidate those, and I did. That's going to be coming back as part of this, I, I've provided that document from April of twenty-one, uh, to the city manager. Now, what I'm asking for tonight is, I'd like it to go back, I would like it to go to the planning commission, if at all possible, so that they can have their set of eyes. Uh, you know, they're looking at it also from a technical standpoint, and, uh, otherwise it's going to come straight to us, and we're not going to have any, um, review by the, uh, planning, uh, commission.
Um, so, okay, Councilmember Willie, let me, let me, uh, refer this to, uh, both our city attorney and our city manager. Um, I, 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 I think, um, kind of thinking about the date right now, October eighteenth, it might be a little bit of a squeeze, um, but, uh, in any event, let, let, let's talk about this procedurally as well as substantively, um, presumably, and so, uh, city attorney Johnson.
So the pl- the planning commission doesn't by code have any jurisdiction over this particular ordinance? Um, uh, it would be within council's discretion to refer the matter to the planning commission, um, that would require, uh, that, that to be agendized and voted on by council.
Okay, so let's, let's think through this, I just, for, for scheduling purposes, if we were to put this on, on the November first meeting, um, we could potentially get that, um, directed, and then planning commission meets on the Tuesdays that we don't meet, right? And so it'd probably be too late for November eighth. Um, two weeks after that would be fifteen, twenty-third. I, I, I don't know if the planning commission is having a meeting on the week of Thanksgiving, um, but, uh, I guess technically it might be able to, you know, happen, but, uh, okay, well, uh, uh, Councilmember Willie, your, uh, request is taken under advisement, we'll, uh, and, um, city manager Wu, was there any other follow-on, um, that you wanted to make at this time?
Um, we could also consider, um, Councilmember Willie's request as part of December sixth study session, for the actual ordinance to be reviewed by the plant, by the planning commission, but not at this juncture.
That's true, that's a good point, okay, uh, very good, thanks very much, and so, Councilmember Willie, uh, we will, uh, go, did you have any further, uh, follow-ons at this time?
So, so then, well, a plan B might be that, you know, the material that's going to be presented at the, uh, at the meeting for us, if that could be provided to the, uh, planning department, and they could, at the very least, review it at their discretion and give us whatever thoughts they have.
Uh, okay, well, Councilmember Willie, I think we've, um, kind of exhausted the limits of what we can really, you know, go over, uh, under this item for, for this, but, uh, but duly noted, and, uh, I commit to you that we will follow up on this, um, and so let's, uh, go on to Vice Mayor Chow at this time, Vice Mayor Chow.
I, for the record, I think about a month ago, planning commissioners have requested that, um, they should, they be allowed to come in on the small cell ordinance, and the council, um, I think I did inquire to the city attorney, and then, uh, there was, I think it's our mis-management of timeline, otherwise it would have been possible, so I want to point that out. And, um, and also I want, uh, some clarification, because in the past, the council, city council or school board has been making, uh, is responding to public comment with short responses. Per Brown Act, this is allowed, in almost every Brown Act trend, trending, uh, it does say we are allowed to respond to questions or comments in non-agenda items, so I would like to get, um, but then the city ma- but the mayor, um, right now there is, doesn't seem to be a space to provide, so I would like to, uh, um, either agendize this or figure out a way that the council has a method to provide responses per permitted under Brown Act.
Okay, Vice Mayor, I, I will take that under advisement, uh, and it's appreciated, it's, it's good to get clarity with regard to, uh, what constitutes the, um, brief, uh, clarifying information and?
And when to do it, right now?
Well, okay, so we, we will go ahead and, and clarify that, I, I think we could probably do that briefly in the next meeting, I would imagine, perhaps even under city managers',um, you know, uh, reports, um, but, but, you know, we can go ahead and, um, get some public clarity as to the scope of, uh, what's permissible, and I, I think that is, uh, a fair, fair point, and, uh, without expounding on it, um, our city attorney was requesting, uh, to speak, and, and Chris, did you want to, uh, follow on at this time?
Oh, I, I, I don't think it's necessary to follow on at this time, I, I'm happy to have a discussion about sort of what level of response is appropriate to public comment with the vice mayor and council, and we can, um, clarify that at, uh, public meetings, if necessary.
Absolutely, absolutely, yeah, I mean, you, we, we all know that the, uh, the aims here are to have public clarity and transparency and, you know, and to have the appropriate notice, um, uh, in balance with all the usual, um, aspirations of equity and fairness, so, um, so, so absolutely, I, I, I think we're all on the same page here. So Vice Mayor Chow, did you want to follow on to your comments at this time?
Um, just want to be sure that the main issue is, right now there is not a time in our agenda to even do that, it's not with the level of response, yeah, that's the issue.
Okay, well, tha- thank you, Vice Mayor, I, I think we can clarify those points, uh, without getting into the substance of them, uh, at this time, but, you know, duly noted as well, so thanks very much. Um, you know, I, I just want to encourage everyone to, um, you know, be, uh, civil and open out there, I, I know that this is, uh, a real privilege in our, um, you know, in, in our system to be able to, uh, kind of vet a lot of things over the course of, uh, uh, these, these months and weeks, and so, um, yeah, you know, be good to each other, and I think that we can, uh, get to, uh, you know, a fantastic place and stay there, and, you know, keep maintaining, uh, the course of, uh, positive actions, so, um, thank you very much, I, uh, appreciate everyone's, uh, work here, uh, Vice, uh, Vice, uh, City Manager Wu, you just turned on your microphone, did you want to make, uh, a brief comment before we adjourn the meeting?
Yes, 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 thank you, Mayor Paul, just want to follow up on, um, the items that were brought up just now, so Councilmember Moore would like to see a sign ordinance being brought back, um, I didn't hear any support of that, just want to make sure that, is it just a comment, or is there enough interest for coun- uh, for staff to bring it back? And if so, is there a particular area for the sign ordinance?
I, I, I heard it as a sign ordinance, um, you know, update, is that, or, or just, you know, maybe not a study session, but perhaps a summary of it, was that correct, Councilmember?
Um, yes, I'd like people to know what the sign ordinance actually is, um, and, and I think I'd actually add on banners, um, that would also be important. Um, there was a, an issue which came up regarding all of the commercial banners, um, which, came in during the COVID time, and it was found that, uh, one complaint regarding one banner ended up uncovering that maybe like a hundred banners had not been properly permitted.
Let's, uh, let, let, let's get to the kind, kind of procedural, uh, issue of what's being requested, so would a memo suffice if that was something that was?
I would want the public to know it, that's where you run into the, the issue, because it's more about providing the public information about this, this is our sign ordinance, and also for banners too, because I'm seeing, um, some that aren't actually advertising the business that they're around, they're advertising other things.
Well, I, I would say, well, okay, again, without expounding into the substance of it, but I, I, I think a memo could be made, an informational item, and placed on consent, right?
It could work that way.
Right, okay, that would work, okay, great.
Thank you.
Um, okay, and so, Madam City Manager, I guess we had Councilmember Willie and then Councilmember, uh, Vice Mayor Chow.
Right, so my understanding is that, um, Councilmember Willie's, um, request is on the five G, which we, um, tentatively commit to bring it back on December sixth, and Council, uh, Vice Mayor Chow's request will be handled by city attorneys separately, and also individually with each individual city council, just want to make sure that we're on the same page.
Oh, I, you know, I, I think Vice Mayor Chow's request is very similar to Councilmember Moore's request in that there was a desire for that to be, you know, made publicly known, is that, is that fair? I mean, I, I don't think that's a privileged attorney, you know, uh, communication, right? I mean, that should be something that is, um, you know, good for general consumption as well.
No, it's, it's not, we, we could just, I, it, it won't require a lengthy discussion, I could just mention it at the appropriate time in our next meeting.
Okay, sounds good, all right?
Thank you.
Okay, great, thank you very much, and, um, that definitely, you know, adds a lot of clarity to, oh, and just, uh, you know, um, ju- ju- just to kind of dot the i and cross the t on this, I'll go ahead and second anything that's requested of these, you know, several items from, from my colleagues, so, okay, well, uh, thank you very much, everyone, uh, it's October eighteenth, our next regularly scheduled council meeting is on November first, and so, I, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor, did you want to make a comment, or was there something else?
So, now that, um, as we are clarifying when or what short responses, uh, are allowed, I hope also to gla- get a clarification on the item that currently council member announcements, um, because announcements, it used to be that we would, uh, talk about comments we received from the residents, and when we may not be at during the public meeting, but I would m- mention, okay, here's what I heard, and then I give a short response, but I was stopped today, so I want to get a good clarification, um, if there are issues residents brought up, and then is that appropriate time to respond to that, and during the short announcement, because I think people have done that before, and they were not stopped, so I want to?
Okay, well, thank you, Vice Mayor, I think your, um, yeah, I think your point has been made, and, um, we bid you a good evening.
Another issue is, uh, I, I send, uh, this to city clerk already that I think probably many people need to know, um, many, uh, volunteers have been told that yard signs are not allowed to touch the ground on a city property.
Uh, Vice Mayor, I, I, I want to cut you off here.
So we need clarification for everyone.
I, I understand, but let's not get into the substance of an oral communication at this time, so, uh, yeah, thank you very much, I understand that we all have a lot of, uh, fervor for a lot of the issues that are presented to us, but at this time, from a procedural perspective, uh, let us go.
This is similar to Councilmember Moore's request for information, so why is that?
Right, but we had the count, we had, we had, everyone had their turn, right, Vice Mayor, and then?
Okay.
City Manager Wu wrapped up, and so let's go ahead and, uh, respect the, uh, agenda, and so, uh, at this time, we're at adjournment, and, uh, we bid everyone a great evening and have a rest.
City Member Willie has his hand up.
Uh, Councilmember Willie does, uh, have his hand up, but, uh, let me, well, in the interest of fairness, uh, Councilmember Willie, since I, uh, was, uh, willing to entertain Vice Mayor Chow, uh, well, Councilmember Willie, did you have any concluding comments at this time?
Yes, because the, the city manager said she didn't hear, you know, that there was more support for Councilman Moore's, uh, sign coming back to us, by all means, and so, yes, I had already spoken, so how am I supposed to support this?
Uh, yes, uh, Councilmember Willie, I, I, I apologize, I think you probably missed that part where I told the city manager that I would go ahead and second anything that was brought up among those items.
Oh, that's right, you did say that, thank you.
Okay, great, thank you so much. All right, well, everyone, uh, have a great night, we will see you on November first for our next regularly scheduled, uh, city council meeting for the city of Cupertino. Thank you very much, and meeting adjourned.